Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this June 29th Special City Council meeting. This is a remote meeting. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge what this meeting format means. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meetings, from being conducted in person. This prohibition has been extended through July. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. Many of you have signed up in advance to make comments. If anyone is on the call who did not sign up but would like to speak, please press star three on your phone, and we will add you to the speakers list. At this point in time, we'll take a moment to take the roll call of council members in attendance, so please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle? Here. Councilmember Goodman? Looking for the mute button.
I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I'm here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. We also have a lot of our city staff participating tonight. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, Police Chief Scott Bearbaum, Human Resources Director Stephanie Johnson, Human Services Coordinator Monica Negrilla, City Clerk Tina Eggers, Deputy City Clerk Tisha Ghezir. Other city staff may also be in attendance this evening. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. The clerk or I will call on you to make comments when we reach that portion of the agenda. And we have some guidelines for tonight's meeting. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking, and mute your microphone when you're not speaking. If you are also streaming live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak. Please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in debate. The next item on the agenda this evening is public comments, and for those providing public comments, please direct them to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone. Star six may be an option on your phone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes, and remute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, I will ask them to stop and mute their microphone. If a speaker does not comply, I may direct staff to mute their microphone. If a disruption of the meeting occurs, an order cannot be restored, and may direct staff to remove you from the call. Citizens' comments, written and verbal, are a very important aspect of our public process. The city takes the comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, we have nine individuals signed up to speak, and the first is Travis Higgins.
Thank you, Travis. If you'd like to unmute, you have the floor.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Travis Higgins. I'm a resident here in Issaquah, and I live off of Issaquah Boulevard Road. And so, I've lived here for about the last three years. Prior to this, I was in Seattle for about 10 years. And I just wanted to make a comment in regards to a topic that has been unfortunately becoming really, really popular, which is this idea of defunding, which is quickly becoming dismantling the police. And I actually didn't think this would be applicable to our city, but, you know, after visiting the police station, I heard that it actually is. And I want to start by saying, you know, look, I was angered and saddened and sickened, went through a range of emotions when I saw what happened to George Floyd on national television. And that same feeling persists when I see all the other injustices that African-Americans have had happen to them at the hands of other police departments across the nation. Not that it matters, but myself, I have African-Americans in my immediate family. I see them multiple times per week. And while never by the hands of police, they have experienced racism living in Reston, Washington, just by the public. So I realize that racism still exists. Now, that all being said, I am in no way, though, supportive of defunding or dismantling the police. Now, I'm all for rethinking about, you know, maybe how we can focus policing efforts, maybe thinking about, you know, how we can invest the right resources to ensure officers have, you know, the appropriate training. That's something the community and the department feels is necessary. But I just don't want to have something that has happened in another city, even Seattle, another state, have a direct impact on the way that we think about policing in our community. You know, I said before, I lived in Seattle for 10-plus years before moving to Issaquah. I moved here to raise my family. And I watched how their city council essentially handcuffed the police, no pun intended, and didn't allow them to do their jobs and enforce, you know, the law on things that people thought were petty crimes. And they're not perfect by any means. I know they've done things wrong. But I watched over 10 years on how those policies have destroyed the city. And you can argue with me as you like, but if you look at, you know, what's happening literally there now, I don't think many people could say that they would want that here. You know, people being shot, people being killed. Last night, a 16-year-old boy was killed. 14-year-old boy was pretty good shot in Capitol Hill. I think, you know, if the community feels that we need to make a change to anything associated with policing, I think there's much better ways to do it than think about defunding the police, eliminating the police officers that we have. I think we can work together as a council, as a community, and as a police department if we feel that things need to be changed. But again, I don't feel that you get there by taking money away from the police. Maybe we do have to think about maybe providing them the opportunity to have more training in different areas. You know, I don't know if everybody knows this, but, you know, you have to train, you have to have more hours to become a cosmetologist than you do according to our state website sometimes to become police. I know our police officers work hard. I have a ton of respect for what they do. They have an incredibly difficult job. And they're under fire right now on every single level, and a lot of times, at least for Issaquah, I don't think that that's necessarily fair. So again, I want to reiterate that I'm not saying that everything is perfect, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't think about, you know, change if, again, the community and the department feel something that's needed, but don't take away the police. Don't defund the police. Don't let what happened to Seattle happen here. And think about this, you know, the last thing I'll say is, in my last minute or so, is, you know, we entrust the police with a heavy responsibility to enforce the law and ultimately to keep us safe. That is a huge responsibility that requires a very just moral code and requires someone of the right, you know, capacity to be able to execute that job. If we continue to berate the police, to demonize them, when it's not warranted, you know, I want you to think about, like, what type of person are we going to be able to recruit in the future if you're able to take this job? I absolutely think that as part of our partnership with police, we each have to be held accountable. That goes to the community as well as the police. They absolutely have to be held accountable. But if we continue to demonize them, we continue to make them out to be these bad guys, good luck finding someone to continue to want to do that job. It's already hard enough as it is. It's probably one of the most difficult jobs you can do. I'll leave my last 30 seconds. I would just say, please, don't defund the police.
Travis, thank you for your comments. And I just want to make clear, in case I, maybe I should have done this earlier in the meeting, in this special session this evening, we are not anticipating any decisions on defunding the police or other steps. We are entering into a process of community engagement, and I would encourage everyone who comes and speaks this evening to continue to follow this as we work through it in the next few weeks. So Travis, thank you for coming. City Clerk, who's up next?
Next, we have Mike Kearns.
Thank you. My name is-
Mike, if you want, great. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mike Kearns. I've been a citizen of Issaquah for six years now. I'm a local business owner and a civic volunteer. I want to talk about what's going on around us tonight, then we'll talk about racial issues and the situation with the police department. We've all seen what Black Lives Matter and other extremist groups are doing on Capitol Hill. Violence, vandalism, looting, destroying property, threatening, intimidating the people who live there. We're also seeing people shooting other people. Several of them have died. I'd like to quote Thomas Sowell. He's a black man who grew up in Harlem, a Marine Corps veteran of the Korean War, and a senior fellow of the Hoover Institution at Stanford University. He sums it up like this, quote, "Politically, there are few ideas more potent than the notion that all your problems are caused by other people and their unfairness to you," unquote. The constant shouting of systemic racism is exactly that. Blame others for your problems because they are unfair to you. We've seen a woman named Patrisse Cullors, who is one of the founders of Black Lives Matter, admit in a video about the socialist and communist basis of BLM when she said, quote, "Myself and Alicia in particular are trained organizers. We are trained Marxists," unquote. Marxism is a predecessor to communism. We all know communism is a failed ideology of oppression, imprisonment, and torture. Thus, BLM is not about race. It is about instituting communism in the United States by threat, by force, and by violent death if necessary. Black Lives Matter is lying to us, and their way of doing things is not what Issaquah's all about. America did not invent slavery. America was not born of nor based on slavery. Slavery has been around as long as recorded history, several thousand years. And to this very day, you can go now to What is Libya, and you can buy a slave. You will be buying a black slave from a black man. Do we support BLM, but we are not concerned about being able to buy black slaves in Libya today? If we're not concerned about that, we're all hypocrites. I'd like to turn to some statistical facts about what's been going on. Let's look at some of the FBI statistics. First, year over year, the vast majority of black people who are shot by police are shot by a black police officer. Second, the vast majority, upwards of 90% of blacks who are shot and murdered by anyone in the United States are shot by a fellow black person. So how do we improve these two statistics? It's a cultural issue. Now, I'm not saying all blacks are like this. I'm not implying that at all, and can forget about calling me a racist for saying it. But the facts are, regardless of your race, if you're not dealing or using drugs, if you're not publicly abusing alcohol, not committing crimes or running with a gang, you will likely never come in contact with the police. On the other hand, if you are constantly listening to music that has lyrics that encourage abuse of women, encourage abuse of drugs and alcohol, shooting and murdering people, and especially killing cops, you are going to be damaging yourself and your culture regardless of your race. When you act out those lyrics, you are very likely to attract the attention of the police. Is America, and especially the police, systematically racist? No, absolutely not. Are the police hunting down black men as we are told by BLM? No, absolutely not. According to the FBI statistics, if anything's going on, black men are hunting down and murdering black men. This is not a problem of police brutality. It is a cultural problem. We need to fix that cultural problem before anything else will improve. Speak more directly of our police. This supposed crisis of police killing blacks is a false crisis. It's being driven by the media and a Marxist organization, Black Lives Matter, that is not based in our city, our county, or even Washington State. BLM are outsiders who want to cause problems with us to support their national political cause. I've met plenty of our police officers. They're very professional, very concerned, and they even want to protect the people who behave badly. In summary, we have common ground. I've never owned a slave, and I don't think any of you have either. Let's start with that common understanding of each other and work our way up from there. I have one last question to ask everyone. Whose life does not matter? Whose life does not matter? Mayor Pauli and our esteemed council and everyone here listening, thank you for your time and your consideration. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mike. City Clerk, who is our next speaker this evening?
Our next speaker is Matt Brackell.
Great. Matt, if you could unmute, you have the floor.
Hey, everybody. My name is Dr. Matt Brackell, and I'm a resident, a property owner, a business owner, a renter, and a landlord here in Issaquah. I spoke up at a recent council meeting, and I'm speaking up again to address the issue of reimagining our police force. I'm asking the council to please engage with the citizens of Issaquah around this issue. We need a variety of voices to be heard, and we should be engaging with the entirety of our very diverse population. The council has the power to conduct that type of community outreach, and honestly, I think this discussion needs to be brought to the people rather than the people being expected to come to the council. I know that whenever we try to discuss this issue, we talk about reforming, abolishing, defunding, or reimagining the police. Things can get a little bit heated. There's a lot of details that are difficult to discuss, and there are a lot of facts that need to be explored. For instance, black-on-black crime, white-on-white crime, black-on-black murder, white-on-white murder, statistically, they're all within 8% of each other. So there's not a statistical difference in those topics. However, there is different ways that we view these as individuals. Now, this may be the social scientist in me, but I'd like to propose the city of Issaquah consider a cohort model of discussion so that everybody has a safe and a comfortable place to relax and to learn and to share. So what I think should happen is the council should form two groups. One group that primarily supports our current policing structure or is focused on interventions that would require spending more money on policing, such as further training. And another group that wants to reimagine the police force and which would require spending money to develop a different type of crisis response, like I talked about previously, that would consist of different individuals who are not the police but are highly specialized in the situations they're responding to. I think having these two cohorts sharing their thoughts separately in different groups so that they're not upsetting, causing conflict, or fighting with each other, but being able to address their concerns, and that will give everyone more power. It will reduce that conflict, and that last part is really important to me because people have a hard time learning when they're asked. It's important to learn from our community and make meaningful changes during this really difficult time. And I also think that this model would give the council more information that they could use to shape the way forward. I think I've made it clear in my previous statements and in this one that I want to reimagine the police force to be a more diverse scheme of professionals that are responding to situations that they've been actually trained for. The Minneapolis police was a highly reformed police department in the wake of shootings that had occurred in that region and others, and that didn't help George Floyd. So I have professional experience with this, and I've worked with the police consistently throughout my career, and I'm asking the council sincerely to take the next steps in developing a crisis team of responders that would honestly be the best fit for Issaquah's needs. I'm a psychologist, though, and I'm biased in that way. I could also talk about this for a really long time, so I can be reached at email@drbrackell@brackelsychological.com. And if anyone has any questions or would like to engage me in further discussion, I completely welcome that. Thank you all very much, and I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Matt. City Clerk, who is next up this evening?
Andrea Greaves.
Thank you, Andrea. If you unmute, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, I've been an 91 dispatcher for the last 10 years, and the last six have been with the city of Issaquah Police Department. During the special council meeting on June 15th, Councilmember Goodman stated that she was open to meeting with the police and wanted to make sure it was productive, and wanted to make sure the police came prepared with what they wanted to know. As councilmembers, is what I would like you to know. I want you to know that I was heartbroken by the tragic death of George Floyd and deeply saddened by the events that followed. I want you to know that I find the idea of racism in our country extremely upsetting. As the mother to young children, it scares me to think about raising my children in a world that still has so much evil and uncertainty. And as a coworker to the very best group of police officers I have ever known, I want you to know that I was also deeply saddened for them, knowing that this is going to make their already challenging profession even more difficult. As hard as the events in Minneapolis are to digest, I am 100% confident in saying, that is not Issaquah. Those are not our police. I want you to know that the men and women of the Issaquah Police Department are hardworking, kind, and empathetic. They strive for inclusion and equity in all of their interactions with the community. They are more than just police officers, and at the end of the day, when they take off their badges, they are mothers and fathers, husbands and wives, who are simply trying to provide a great life for their families. We are asking them to make perfect decisions in imperfect situations and then demonizing them after the fact. Councilmember Walsh asked if officers are able to respond to calls without firearms and return to the station and get them if a call warranted it. The problem with that is we live in a society where there are more firearms than people, and officers are targeted and hunted down for nothing other than the uniform they wear. Ambushes and law enforcement are shockingly common, and asking them to leave the police department without any means of defending themselves tells that officer, we do not value their life, and it tells their family that we do not value the life of their loved ones. As the wife to a very good police officer, I find the idea of disarming the police unimaginable. The consequence of that choice would be devastating. It increases the chance that our officers would not make it home to their spouses and more importantly, to their children. The council and community alike echoed statements about the implementation of eight can't wait, and I agree. There is a lot of very well-researched and data-driven information that absolutely should be implemented. Council President Hunt brought the question to Chief Bearbaum. Why our department policy does not follow the suggested ban of all shooting and moving vehicles? I want you to imagine you're walking along the new closed section of Front Street with your family. You notice a vehicle coming toward you, striking pedestrians. Your heart raises, and you think, does the driver have a medical condition? Are they elderly or lost? Your heart sinks when you realize that the driver appears to be targeting people, using their vehicle as a 4,000-pound weapon. You notice a police officer to your right, gun drawn, but doing nothing. Why isn't this police officer stopping this? You see the terror and anger in their face, and it tells you they want to, but they aren't. The terror in their face comes from the idea of losing their job for doing the right thing, and the anger comes from the decision being taken out of their hands by someone who has never nor will ever be in a position to make that critical of a decision. Why would anyone want to be a police officer right now? The good men and women who are trained, educated, who have had a passion to serve since the day they were born are going to turn this job away. I want you to understand policing in America is not a job. It is a calling. There are people who answer this call every day, and it breaks my heart to see the men and women with integrity, who serve honorably, who serve their community, being beaten down by people who have never nor will ever stand in their shoes. We can all agree that policing can always be improved, and I would love to see our officers given that chance. Improvement comes in the form of more funding, not defunding. Well-funded police departments are successful police departments. A well-funded police department with quality training is what is going to protect our most valuable community members. Our police officers deserve funding. They deserve to be trained properly, and they deserve to have the backing of their city. You're going to take the police from single moms, vulnerable children, domestic violence victims, people who have neither the time nor the inclination to be on the streets waving signs and making public statements. You're going to take the police from the people who need them the most. There are bad apples in every profession, and the police department is not exempt. Every single person who I've spoken with hates bad cops. But the people who hate bad cops the most are the good cops, the ones who stick around, the ones who serve properly, and you're making it hard on them. You're holding an entire profession accountable for the actions of so few. Do not indict 800,000 law enforcement professionals on the actions of the few. The only thing we owe our law enforcement officers is our respect and our gratitude. It is because of them we have the ability to go about our daily lives without the images of evil trapped in our minds. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Andrea. Andrea is a dispatcher at the city of Issaquah, and I just want to thank you for your service and for what you do for our community. Thank you, Andrea. City Clerk, who is next up on the speakers list?
Our next caller, Kristy Derringer, doesn't appear to be on the line at the moment, so we'll move forward to M. Haynes.
Thank you. M., if you could unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hello, council and Mayor Pauli. My name is M. Haynes. I am a recent graduate of Gibson Lake High School and a resident of Issaquah. Today, I want to talk to you about the Eight Can't Wait campaign, which seems to be being utilized in a lot of the materials, and why we should not be using it as a basis for making our community safer for all. The Eight Can't Wait campaign, which was published in early June, has recently put out a statement about the mistakes they made when creating their plan. They admit that their steps achieve only short-term change and that the end goal, and I paraphrase them here, for all of us should be defunding the police and investing in our community. If the Eight Can't Wait campaign can see their mistakes they've made, I hope that we can too. Instead of investing in these steps because they seem easy and measurable, I ask that you do the things that will actually make change and keep our community safer. These steps can take many forms, but it starts with prioritizing the community and not the police force in the 2021 city budget. What happened to George Floyd was not an isolated incident, and it's part of a bigger picture of systemic racism in the police force in America. We ask too much of our police officers. They have less training than hairdressers and cosmetologists, and we expect them to be social workers, psychologists, domestic violence intervention specialists, medics, and much, much more. And we can't expect that of just one person. We need to invest in community housing, food stability, domestic violence intervention, mental health professionals. This is the way that we can make our city safer for all. Thank you.
Thank you, M. City Clerk, who is up next? Next, we have Carrie McGill.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Carrie McGill, the CEO of Rowley Properties, and tonight I'm speaking to Agenda Bill 7999. Rowley Properties has been helping businesses succeed, families belong, and our community to prosper for over 65 years now. I have purposely never testified about the crimes and other incidents that we witnessed and have addressed with the police over the decades because that hasn't really been something that I've wanted people to think about or to have our community be known for. But while I'm uncomfortable airing some dirty laundry, as you are listening to perspectives regarding the Issaquah police, I think this information is important for you to know just how vital our police are to our daily life and how grateful we at Rowley Properties are for their presence, for their responsiveness, and their watchful eye to keep Issaquah safe. In all the years that we've done business in Issaquah, we have felt like we've had a partnership with the police force in watching over our properties. And I invite you to enter a couple of scenes that have been part of my career. Imagine, if you will, a call in the middle of the night to learn that an infant has died on one of your properties. The police are called to investigate the potential crime scene to ensure that it was not malicious and to engage the coroner. The police not only must seek answers, but at the same time manage an incredibly difficult situation with care and respect for all involved. In this case, the death was attributed to Sid. But there have been other times when it was suicide, which are equally as disturbing, and at times, death by natural causes. Now imagine a drive-by shooting of a tenant's home over a dispute. Other cars in the parking lot are hit with bullets, and some have penetrated the building. The police arrive within minutes, thank goodness, to the scene. They cap through the perpetrator and calm the witnesses. Gratefully, no one was harmed, but the scene left many feeling uneasy until the individual was able to be prosecuted. Those are just a couple of the extreme examples of some of the work that we have done with the police department on things that have happened in our properties. But over the years, we have dealt with multiple bank robberies, thefts, graffiti, property destructions, arsons, and fires. In fact, one time, early in my career at Rowley, before our buildings were non-smoking, a police officer saved the life of an apartment tenant who fell asleep in his recliner while smoking a cigarette, and it lit his entire apartment on fire. They were hospitalized for smoke inhalation but were otherwise okay. We have accidents occurring regularly on Gilman Boulevard in front of our office that have for years, including hit-and-runs with various different levels of medical attention necessary for those involved. The police are managing traffic while making sure that the victims are receiving appropriate medical attention. In the last five years, we've had three vehicles crash into our building. We've dealt with lost children. We've been involved in FBI searches for illegal drugs, and in one case, it involved a large national crime ring. We've had meth labs dropped on us. We have dealt with frequent drug issues, many which involve aggression and hallucinations. Safety considerations are important for our tenants and for the people that are involved on the scene, and there are hazardous needles improperly tossed on our property. We've had homeless wanting assistance and homeless not wanting assistance. We've dealt with domestic violence calls, trespassing issues, reckless driving threats, human trafficking, noise complaints, and such crazy and unimaginable things as pigs running loose in the parking lot. There are so many things that our police do that you do not hear about to keep Issaquah safe. Every business owner in Issaquah has their story. Without a strong, ethical, and service-minded police department such as Issaquah, all our quality of life suffers. So tonight, I'm saying thank you to Police Chief Bearbaum for his leadership and for his team's service to our community. And a special thank you for the chief and his team for catching the guy that broke into our construction site the weekend before last and stole our tools. They just happened to run across him walking down the sidewalk at 1:30 in the morning carrying a chainsaw and thought that seemed kind of weird. They were able to recover the tool. They were able to recover the tool. To the council, yes, we absolutely must pause to understand and acknowledge the Black Lives Matter movement. Put ourselves in the shoes of others and understand their perspective. We need to be open to feedback and we need to always look for opportunities to continue to improve. But before you make any decisions that would reduce or reallocate funds for the police, I ask that you first carefully seek to understand what our Issaquah police are actually doing behind the scenes to uphold safety, law, and order. Let's ensure that our public policy response is well-informed and that the outcomes are not decided based upon perception or stereotypes, but on the data of what is actually happening in Issaquah. Thank you very much.
Thank you Carrie. City Clerk, who is next up on our speakers list?
Before announcing the next speaker, I'd like to remind our additional individuals who've called in tonight but have not signed up in advance to make comments that you are able to make comments this evening, please just let us know by pressing star three on your phone and we'll add you to the speakers queue. So please just press star three on your phone. The next individual who signed up to make comments is Daniel Rep.
Thank you, Daniel, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Rep. I live at 425 Columbia Place Northwest and I am a lifelong Issaquah resident, Black Lives Matter. At the June 15th council meeting, I was encouraged to hear re-imaginings of our emergency services during the public comments. I was also grateful for the commitment by Chief Bearbaum, Mayor Polley, and the city council to listen to the community and make changes to our police procedures. Some themes I heard at that last meeting were wanting Issaquah to be a model for other cities in Washington and having more community input into policy creation. Those are really exciting prospects. Unfortunately, this process of reform is hindered by our use of Lexipol to write Issaquah Police Department's policy manual. Lexipol is a private company which writes and updates police policy manuals using a risk management-based approach. The risk being managed here is the legal liability of participating police departments. Promotional emails sent by Lexipol to police departments have included questions such as, are outdated policies putting your agency at risk? And is your use of force policy properly protecting you? Lexipol is a cost-effective option for departments, but there are non-monetary costs we must consider in using their services. In an article on Lexipol in the Texas Law Review, UCLA Law Professor Eakley and Schwartz noted that Lexipol's approach appears to run contrary to the purposes, values, and processes recommended by two generations of advocates for police policymaking. While scholars and experts have long viewed police policies as a means of limiting officer discretion, Lexipol appears to view the products primarily as a means of reducing legal liability. Now, interestingly, Lexipol's not always effective at preventing legal liability for police departments, as evidenced by a 2018 lawsuit against Spokane Police Department. Spokane PD settled and paid $49,000 in damages and legal fees due to a Lexipol-written policy that was in violation of the Washington State Constitution. But regardless, if the goal of police reform in Issaquah is to protect community members, particularly people of color, it does not make sense for us to have our policies written by a company focused on protecting the existing law enforcement system. At the June 15th meeting, Chief Bearbaum brought up the Police Executive Research Forum's 2016 Use of Force Guiding Principles, which includes placing the sanctity of human life at the heart of police agencies and banning officers from shooting into moving vehicles. I am very glad that our police department is taking those recommendations seriously. However, Lexipol has posted articles on its website which object to both of these aspects of the guiding principles. And Lexipol argues that these policies increase legal liability for police departments. Because of this view, it becomes no surprise that Issaquah's policy manual, written by Lexipol, does not ban officers from shooting into moving vehicles. And in fact, we've had to kind of specify in training when that became and when not because it's not clear in the policy itself. Simply put, Lexipol's primary concern is protecting police departments, not police officers, and certainly not the communities they serve. There are many other problematic aspects of Lexipol's philosophy which I do not have time to discuss this evening. If you want to learn more about that, I refer you to the work by the ACLU of Washington, the North Quest Immigrants Rights Project, and the University of Washington Center for Human Rights. My main concern this evening is how Lexipol will make transparent, effective reform difficult for Issaquah. Lexipol retains the copyright over all its clients' policy manuals, even when local departments edit them. This means that if Issaquah and other Washington cities use Lexipol, who use Lexipol, they might not be allowed to share their policies freely throughout the state. So if we're trying to work together to develop new policies that work, we won't be able to be a model for other cities because we won't own the policies we write. Furthermore, whenever Lexipol updates its policy manuals, changes by local departments like the ones we might institute are overwritten by default, which can be a real headache. Most concerning, however, is that Lexipol does not share how it decides its policies. All decisions are made within the company by an undisclosed group of employees and police departments like Issaquah are simply given the final policies without the rationale behind them. The Issaquah City Council has proposed considering a board of community members to review IPD policies, and that's a really exciting idea. But wouldn't it be helpful if that board knew why those policies were set in the first place? Right now, we don't know that rationale. The King County Sheriff's Office, which IPD works with frequently, writes their own policy manual. So do the Bellevue and Seattle police departments. We could ask them for guidance in doing the same. And unlike IPD, they would be at liberty to share those policies. In conclusion, Lexipol is both philosophically and practically antithetical to Issaquah's efforts for community health-focused police reform. I urge the city council, Mayor Polley, and Chief Bearbaum to terminate our partnership with Lexipol and seek community-grown policies instead. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Daniel. City Clerk, who else is on our list this evening?
Next we have Stan Conrad.
Stan, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Stan Conrad and I live at 445 Southeast Andrews in Issaquah. Some of you may know me, some of you may not. I'm a former employee of the Issaquah Police Department. I served there for 28 years as an officer, started in 1988. I've lived in the community during that time, or most of that time, and I live here now. Obviously, I have some experience and interest in the events that are taking place today and things that have happened in law enforcement. It's not the first time the police department had to answer to the council or to the community about the services they provide or justifying their existence or their funding. But today, I hear a lot of people who have suddenly become experts in law enforcement and seem to know exactly what this community needs and seem to know exactly what's wrong with the police department. And I think you need to do some homework before you start pointing fingers and before you start making decisions about what's done right and what's done wrong with the Issaquah Police Department or other police departments for that matter. Shortly after I retired, I worked for a year at the Criminal Justice Training Commission where Washington State trains all the police officers except the Washington State Patrol. And it wasn't that long ago that voters passed what was known as Initiative 940 regarding police training, de-escalation training, and decision-making or use of force. I'm not sure if anyone attending this meeting knows anything about what the Training Commission has been working on for the last two years since that law was passed, but very good police training with a lot of community input from the greater area, from the state of Washington and across the country. Washington State was already known as a leader in law enforcement training before I 940 and is probably far out in front of most of the states in the country regarding training. I would invite anyone from the council or anyone else to contact Criminal Justice Training Commission and ask them if you could attend some of their training or view it or actually go to see the new simulator that they have for deciding the use of force. When I observed community members go through that themselves two years ago, some of them left quite shaken because they finally got a more realistic idea of what a police officer faces when they have to make a decision to use force. So I would ask you to go look into that. Public safety in Issaquah is a large part of the quality of life in Issaquah and that's all first responders, fire department, police department, and aid crews. And I think rather than talk about defunding or dismantling the police department, I could see where they could definitely use more help or more budgeted training because I know that's always been a challenge was to get everyone into the training that is needed and required when you just don't have the manpower or the budget. When you take officers off the street, there's no one to replace them. So, you know, if you're talking about any kind of defunding or reducing man size, man force or anything like that, there's plenty of experiments starting to take place across the country where communities are dabbling in their law enforcement agencies. And I think rather than be the guinea pigs, maybe just sit back and watch what happens in these communities when their police departments retreat or don't show up for work or resign or just don't respond to an area because now it's too dangerous. And rather than go, rather than leap into something, maybe take that as an opportunity to learn from them rather than just dabbling and experimenting with your own community's public safety. I know that Lexipol is used by many agencies across the country. The one thing I did want to say about the comments is the policy manual is a public document. Anytime someone wants a copy of it, they can see it. All you gotta do is ask. It may even be posted on the website, I'm not sure, but if anybody wants to review it, it's an open document for their review. See, so I know there's been some, a lot of, society puts a lot of the problems that it has on the police department. It happens more and more and the police departments don't grow very much. And we've asked them to do everything like one of the other commentators said earlier, to be everything from, you know, mental health experts to, you know, community service people. And that's great, the officers really try their best to answer everyone's questions and needs when they show up, but society has to take some responsibility for the problems that they either have abandoned or pulled funding away from or such things like mental health treatment and training and mental health professionals. And I think the department would probably welcome some additional support, resources, and people that could accompany them rather than just taking away from the department. So I hope that-
Excuse me, Stan?
Yeah, I hope the council makes a good decision and, you know, keep the safety of your community in mind.
Stan, thank you very much and for your long, long history with the City of Issaquah. We appreciate the work you've done for our community. Sorry, City Clerk, is there someone else on our speakers list this evening?
Yes, the next speaker is Tara Lee Spencer.
Great, Tara Lee.
Oh, hi there. Thank you, Mayor Polley and councilmembers. Sorry, that was just, I had to unmute myself. So I am a recent resident of Issaquah. I moved from Las Vegas six months ago and in a lot of ways, I rolled the dice and ended up here, but it's a lovely community and it reminds me a lot of the affluent area I lived at in Henderson. But I believe that the questions regarding our police force are evident just in my move that they are in fact systemic. Let's see, fortunately, you know, it sounded like a lot of the younger people on this call really did a lot of their homework and really talked about the policy and a lot of the issues that, just as was mentioned, a way of reimagining how policing could evolve in our communities. It does seem that many, many of our foreign allies do in fact have a reimagined police force and that they are very effective in what they're doing. I don't, I don't ever pull myself into believing that the police force is going to prevent crime. That's just, you just don't have enough bodies to cover everything all at once, but that when we, when we have them out in the community and we expect them to handle things that are better appropriated for mental health and social work and homelessness and poverty, we place an undue burden upon them. And I think that when we talk, when we say things like the defunding, it is a scary terminology. But instead, to really, to really more effectively use our, use our money that we allocate towards the police department, as of right now, our return on investment in a police department is actually not quite what we think it is. It's not, do they, can they, can they catch somebody after they've done something, as the young woman mentioned, you know, walking down the street with a chainsaw? Yeah, they are able to, to kind of maybe sometimes recover things, but is it at an expense of harming and scaring our communities? One of the things that I did want to mention is, and Stan, you know, and Andrea, both of you, thank you as well for your service to the community. I agree, I come from a long line of law enforcement officers. I know the toll that it takes on the family and my brother-in-laws are very special men who serve with dignity and quality. And I can tell you that there is still, and they will mention, and I think a lot of people will, that there is still an element in our, in our police forces that are not just bad apples. And really, in the area of police force, we wouldn't, we shouldn't really want to just justify like bad apples. It's kind of like, you know, pilots. We don't want pilots that just suddenly gear off course. We don't really want police officers that gear off course. And I recognize that, you know, for instance, we have our social workers, we have our teachers, they all pay for their educations, they pay for years of their education. When we talk about these biased trainings, those are things that have been in effect for decades and they, they don't seem to be producing the results that we are looking for. I think that there is stronger changes that we could make and I don't believe that incremental warm, fuzzy, you know, types of trainings are going to make the problem any better. I want to just say this, I had the opportunity to view a video and it was really alarming to me the other day on a young man who had been speeding on his motorcycle and happened to have a video, had his helmet cam on and he was pulled over, he wasn't pulled over necessarily, he was at a stoplight and a officer who was not in uniform had gotten out of his car behind him and pulled his gun on him and held him at gunpoint and insisted upon his wallet and told him he was a police officer. I can't give you the date of that video, but I can tell you that it occurred in King County. Those, that kind of toxic masculinity in our police force is harming our communities. I want to see police officers who are embedded in our communities and are not working against them. And I think that that's one of the best ways that we can look at it is how are we ensuring that not only are our police departments diverse, but that we are holding accountable and giving our police departments the resources in the negotiation process, the ability to remove these bad apples and not have them resurface in another community because their records are sealed or because they, that they are able to be negotiated back into the police union. So at that, I just, again, I appreciate being here, I really do. I am charmed by Issaquah. This is a beautiful town, it's a beautiful state, it is not 107 right now, so that's wonderful too. And at that, I will yield my time, thank you.
Thank you Tara Lee. City Clerk, do we have anyone else on our speakers this evening?
Yes, we do. First Tara Lee, if you could please lower your hand by pressing star three on your phone. And we have an individual with the phone number 425518 who'd like to speak.
Hello, yes, this is Marina. I live in downtown Issaquah. I've lived here my whole life and I appreciate the city council and the community coming together and identifying where there's room for improvement within the city and the police department. One concern that I've had is that in regards to Chief Bearbaum's response to the Eight Can't Wait campaign from the meeting on 6/15, is that he said that the police department was in compliance to that campaign, yet there was a form release the day before where he mentioned chokeholds are in fact used by the department. It's concerning that our chief of police is giving out conflicting information to the community and I would, in the future, like more clarification on this. I have read the use of force document and the wording in that and the entire police manual is vague and leaves much open to interpretation with words such as "when possible" in regards to use of force. There is more detail and structure included in the section regarding their uniforms than the use of force and that has me feeling very uneasy. In 2018, there was reported, carotid, hold, and takedown on a case for failure to comply along with numerous takedowns and taser use for people with mental health issues. along with numerous takedowns and taser use for people with mental health issues. At one point, a weapon was pointed at a subject to gain compliance in a 2016, uh, mental health arrest. Many of these documents are showing me that the City of Issaquah Police Department does in fact have a history of misuse of force and lacks training on self-restraint and judgment. I want to reiterate what I said in the last meeting is that there should be a review of every police officer and their use of force and history of domestic violence. I don't want police officers with a history of domestic abuse or prejudice to serve within our city and I'm okay with longer response times if it means our community is safer from those who would ultimately harm my neighbors. Use of force in our city has doubled since 2016. Ultimately, it would be great if police officers were held more accountable for their actions by the community or any agency that has no association with law enforcement, which we don't have right now. I'm tired of hearing this bad apple analogy. This is not a career where there should have any room for bad apples like surgeons and doctors and pilots. There's no room for error when it comes to human lives. It has become clear after reviewing, reviewing the agenda bill and the many city documents that there is very little crime in our city, so why is our budget so large, $11 million? Why do officers carry assault rifles in their vehicle when there has been one instance of it being pulled in the last five years? There is no reason to have a militarized force in our very low crime, safe suburb. Fifteen to 20% of all officer responses are for community caretaking. If we were to reimagine our city and call responses, then it would be encouraging to see those 15 to 20% of calls be taken by unarmed mental health professionals, substance abuse counselors, or domestic assault specialists. It is not really a question about where are we going to receive the funds, but how are the funds we are currently using or allocated? 720 hours of training is not enough for a person who holds the power over life and death situations and the safety of our community. We require our teachers to have master's degrees and ongoing education to teach our children, yet we allow police officers to roam the halls of our schools and impede the safety of our children, promoting the school-to-prison pipeline. It is important to educate our children on the true history of our nation that's rooted in systemic racism and oppression and not the whitewashed version of history that our children are very much educated in today. I support removing police officers from our school, as has been seen in many cities all over the country in the last month, and way more training for police officers that will be in our community. If you want the public to feel safe, then train the police officers at least as much as teachers and hairdressers and healthcare professionals. Um, from comments I've heard, it seems that what's most important to certain people in the City of Issaquah, uh, not the city, the, the community members of Issaquah, is the protection of their property, not the protection of their neighbors. I think that we should prioritize our community. The time for change is now and we should rise to the occasion together. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up tonight?
No, no one further has signed up to speak or raised their hand to speak.
Thank you. Usually at this time of our meeting, I, we hear from speakers on many, many topics and I try and summarize the different areas that they talked about, but tonight it was a little more straightforward. We heard from a very interesting cross-section of our community on many ideas related to public safety. Those that would like a complete reimagining, those that would like funding reallocated, those that would like to see investments, um, policy reviews. So I think this is a really good start to a process that we are just beginning tonight. So thank you for everybody who came to talk to us and I also want to, uh, let everybody know that, uh, anybody watching or what, viewing this later can always submit written comments to the city council at any time, at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And I would like to turn it over to Council President Hunt, um, to see if there were any comments that were received by email today that she would like to summarize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, we did receive, council did receive a number of comments, um, from community members on the topics that we'll be discussing this evening. Like the public comments that we just heard, they spanned the, um, there, there was a lot of opinions that were, covered a wide range. They ranged from wanting reallocation of funding to wanting more investment or more funding for police and also a fair number of comments, um, wanting a reimagining or a different approach to policing and then also looking beyond policing for, to how we, um, value diversity and equity. Um, specifically, we heard from a member of the community that works closely with the police that wanted more communication between council and the police. Um, and also in follow-up conversation with this individual, um, recommended that we consider and look into more a program called Kahoots, which is a health crisis intervention program based in Eugene, Oregon as one, um, one resource for us to look into. We also heard from community members recommending that we have a task force and, um, also suggested a consultant, um, so that we could, uh, work towards real change for the police and work in conjunction with the community on achieving that change. We, um, heard about a broad need to reform the city's approach to public safety. We received emails in appreciation of the work that our police department does and also in appreciation of the wide variety of community needs that the police officers in Issaquah do address. And, um, we heard specifically about concern about a large vehicle that has previously been at, um, the salmon days but will not be at future salmon days. Um, we heard some letters in opposition to defunding and criticism of the Eight Can't Wait data that was used for the Eight Can't Wait campaign. Um, we received messages urging us to look beyond the police and we received a message, um, saying that it did not, that this approach that we're taking does not feel like we embrace the, and value the diversity in our community. That's a, um, summary of the comments that we've received from the community on this topic.
Thank you, Council President. The next item on our agenda this evening is the agenda bill, but we are really starting down, um, a path of reviewing, reimagining, strengthening, whatever you want to call it, um, how we manage public safety in town. And I wanted to add a few comments before we go into the agenda bill. So I'd like to share with our community meetings, community members this meet, this evening, a few thoughts, um, before the city administrator starts to discuss the next item on our agenda. Issaquah is a culturally rich and diverse community. We strive to be a welcoming and inclusive, inclusive place for everyone who calls Issaquah home. We believe that no one should experience a built-in disadvantage that does not correlate to one's level of effort, education, or income. We believe that everyone should be able to move through their professional and personal worlds with relative ease, that everyone regardless of race should have real access to power, resources, and opportunity. This is why we work to ensure that everyone may experience this community in the same way as a welcoming, inclusive, and equitable place to live. Following the senseless death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, people across our country, including on our steps of Issaquah City Hall, have rightfully demonstrated against racial injustice throughout our country. The Black Lives Matters demonstrators have asked that we take this moment to talk about what we need to do as people, as residents, and as community members to recognize racial bias and make changes to eliminate the disproportionate damage it is doing to people of color. Over the last several weeks, I've heard from residents in our own town who have not experienced Issaquah as a welcoming and inclusive place. I attended a local forum to hear from those in the communities of color, talk about their own experiences in our town. Their stories are not mine to tell, but I can compare my life here with theirs and I can see the stark differences. I have not been asked why I am in my own town. I have not felt stared at or looked down upon or felt less than. I have not been bullied over my hair or my skin color or my clothing. I have not been looked at differently, like an aggressor, or been viewed as scary. I have not coached my children on how to interact with police or worried that their interaction could turn violent. I have not felt like my history, my family's history in America is missing from schools or not celebrated. I have not felt so tired of hearing the voices for change pop up and then disappear again and again. And I have not ever not been given a second chance. I have not thought I should keep my head down, stay quiet, and stay the course, or thought that my skin tone had been the cause for hesitation to trust that I would be able to pay my debts. It is not the responsibility of communities of color to teach us how not to be racist, it is our personal responsibility. We have failed some people in our community for too long and we need to own that and we need to commit to do better. So what can we do to change this? What can we do to be that kinder, welcoming, and inclusive place for all? We can reach out to communities of color and hear their stories, listen to their lived experiences and how they think our community needs to change. We can lean in and listen, listen to understand and not just to reply. We can recognize that this is not just about institutions needing to change, it is the whole community, where we shop, eat, go to the bank, our sports teams, our friends, it is all of us. We can recognize it will take individual action by every citizen and resident to truly bring about the change that our fellow citizens, citizens of color are telling us need to change. We can be proactive and get in front of these disparities instead of reacting to the next terrible act caught on video. I'm prepared to use my role to seek out what it is that needs to change and to act to make those changes happen. I know we can do this. So let's start with step one. Tonight, I'm presenting to council and the community a draft Issaquah Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan that will be brought out to the residents and community members for discussion. I'd like to turn it over to our city administrator, Bob Quitz, um, for AB 7999, the Issaquah Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan. The request tonight is that the council receive the plan and provide direction to the administration. Um, it looks like from my notes that we're actually starting with police chief, so if I have that correct, uh, police chief, would you like to make the presentation?
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, good evening, I am Chief Scott Bearbaum. Um, we're going to start off tonight's presentation to begin answering some of the questions that were posed during the June 15th council meeting. Um, those questions covered several topics such as department policies, metrics on use of force, equipment utilized by the department, and basic department information. Tonight's presentation is only one step of many related to community expectations of police services. It is meant to help provide a current status of police department policies, actions, and level of service. I recognize that moving forward, we are going to have many more meetings, many more steps ahead of us to evaluate and engage the community on these, on these processes. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next one, please. So as was pointed out during, uh, community comment, um, our, and a reminder from the June 15th meeting, our department does utilize LexiPole and we do, it is based off risk management, um, best practice policy manual that regularly updates model current case law as well as federal and state requirements. Uh, essentially, this manual provides guidance on department expectations for responding to and managing calls for service. Next slide, please. We will begin tonight's presentation by comparing the Issaquah Police Department policies to the policies identified to the Eight Can't Wait initiatives. Over the past month, one of the initial initiatives that came to the forefront for community action was Eight Can't Wait. This initiative has identified eight critical policies to examine in police departments. During my previous presentation on June 15th, I related that our department's policies were generally in line with the policies outlined on their website. Since then, my department has submitted our policy manual and the sections of the policies identified to eightcan'twait.org for review. We have not received verification yet from that organization, but we will keep the council updated on their, their evaluation of our policies. And again, tonight's presentation, I recognize that this is just the initial review of these policies, it's just the first step in evaluating police services. We are clearly interested in further conversations with the community about our role within our community. Next slide, please. I would like to, I would like to preface this section of the presentation with the fact that police use of force incidents are dynamic and officers are forced to make split-second decisions about the amount of force to use in any given situation with limited information and in circumstances that are uncertain and rapidly evolving. Ultimately, officers do not want to use force, they would prefer that all encounters with individuals are peaceful and without incident. When officers have to use force, they are responding to the actions of the individual they are interacting with and overcoming that individual's actions. Police officers are authorized by law to use amounts of force that reasonably appears necessary given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. Not all situations are the same and there's no way to specify the exact amount of type of force to be applied in each and every situation. Each officer that responds to a situation brings different factors into the equation of its, if force can be used and what types of force can be used. Additionally, the size, age, and other factors of the other person involved in the incident also factor into what type of force can be used and if force can be used. To give you an example of how quickly some incidents evolve, um, I'd like to share just a personal experience from early in my career. I may really had one or two years on with the department and I responded to a disturbance call between neighbors with a potential firearm involved. During this incident, a female suddenly reached between two couch cushions, pulled a gun, and began to turn towards me. In that moment, I believed my life was in danger and I would have been authorized to use deadly force. I latched on her arm, was able to get the gun from her. It was only after I had the gun in my hand that I realized it was just a pellet gun. In one moment, this was a deadly force situation and the next it was something less, but my reality at that moment, when she produced the gun, was I was now in a fight for my life. These type of situations are not easy, however, we do expect our officers to continuously evaluate the circumstances of every situation, even in high-stress situations, and be able to justify their actions according to the totality of circumstances present at the time. This being said, our policies are written to provide specific guidance to employees on expectations for responding to and managing calls, interacting with the community, and the documentation of those interactions. During this next portion of the presentation, I'll provide a crosswalk of the Issaquah Police Department policies with the policies identified in Eight Can't Wait. I'd first like to talk about banning chokeholds. In law enforcement, this technique is called the vascular neck restraint or carotid hold and has been approved technique to subdue violent individuals. This technique is now considered to be equivalent of deadly force. In a prior communication, I say that we allowed the vascular neck restraint in our policy. We made the decision to remove the use of carotid hold or vascular neck restraint or policy manual and to not allow the use of the technique anymore. We do not train for or support the use of this technique as a use of force option. And yes, we have allowed this technique previously and in 2018, we did have a use of force incident that indicates the use of a carotid hold. At that time, it was allowed by policy and the officer was trained in its application. The officer did not fully use, fully use the technique and as the officer moved towards the application of it, the subject complied and was placed in handcuffs. We documented it as such. I'd like to go on to the next requiring a warning. IPD Policy 300.4 requires a verbal warning when feasible when using deadly force. Additional IPD policies outline the requirement of a verbal warning prior to using other less lethal force options such as a taser or impact projectiles. The reason why when feasible is present in the policy is the fact that not all circumstances allow officers to give a warning. Time, distance, and barriers might not allow for an officer to give warning prior to use of force. For example, one night, we had two officers who had just finished refueling their police cars after a night shift when an SUV careen, came careening around a corner, began turning donuts in the roadway about a block away from them. The officers began driving that way and the subject then began to ram the police cars with his vehicle. In this case, the, the officers did not have time to give warning. The incident ended without any sort of deadly use of force, but there is, sometimes incidents happen so quickly, there's not the ability to. We train for and we encourage our officers to utilize force and especially if we are going to be using deadly force, we train for it and we do encourage them to it, but we recognize that it's not as always an opportunity to. Banning shooting at vehicles. IPD Policy 300.4.1 does not outright ban shooting at moving vehicles, but does outline a very narrow application. There is an expectation officers do not intentionally place themselves in front of a moving vehicle and that they make efforts to remove themselves from harm. Additionally, there are circumstances that may leave no alternative to the officer to stop a threat to others who are in imminent danger. This is one of those situations that we recognize that shooting at a moving vehicle can be ineffective, however, we do have to balance the imminent danger and threats to others in, in this situation. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The next three policy areas are covered by numerous overlaying policies within the department manual that are applicable to how an officer responds to each call that may require de-escalation and require them to only use reasonable force while performing their duties. Isidua Police Department policies related to the use of force identify what techniques are acceptable in certain circumstances and what would not be acceptable in others. The policy manual outlines which techniques and tools should only be used in deadly force situations, while others should only be used when passive resistance is being used on the officer. The policies provide guidance of how and when force should or should not be used. Our department is committed to the sanctity of life. We recognize the value of all human life, and we want to resolve all interactions safely for all involved. These overlaying policies provide an excellent framework for our employees to work towards preservation of life. Ultimately, there may be instances when we are unable to de-escalate, use all alternatives, or stay on a straight-line continuum. For example, one of our officers stopped to say hello to several people at a location. He was talking with a few people when suddenly, when one person suddenly charged the officer and swung in his head. That officer had to immediately react and block the incoming punch. That would be considered a use of force. It was clear the subject was attacking the officer, and in this instance, the officer did not have time to de-escalate or follow force continuum prior to using force. Our police department policies surrounding use of force and de-escalation are clear that officers are expected to continuously evaluate the totality of circumstances and act in an objectively reasonable manner. The policies that outline that, from everything from the tools and equipment that we use, such as control devices and techniques, or conducted energy device, also known as a taser, or when we're interacting with someone who is in a crisis intervention situation, or somebody who is having a mental crisis, and we are how we interact with them. We are giving guidance and training and expectations on how we interact with those individuals. The requirement of the use of force continuum has, again, many of the policies identify, again, how and what types of force are used in each type of incident. Requiring the exhausting all alternatives before shooting falls in line with the de-escalation and the use of force continuum. Again, not all alternatives are reasonable in all situations. Our officers are expected to be able to articulate the totality of circumstances and, again, that objectively reasonable manner. Next slide, please. The duty to intervene, Policy 300.2.1, does require an officer to intervene when observing another officer using force that is beyond what is objectively reasonable. They are required to intervene immediately and report to a supervisor of what their observations were. The requirement for comprehensive reporting is identified in Policy 300.5, and it requires officers to document their use of force. The policy also outlines a review of the incident by the immediate supervisor at the time of the incident, as well as additional review steps up through the chain of command. Each use of force is tracked in a log that documents the type of force used, circumstances surrounding the incident, and the demographics of those involved. Additionally, the department performs an annual use of force review for any trends, concerns, training opportunities, equipment needs, or policy revisions. The use of force tracking log has been provided to council, and we will review it further later in this presentation. Next slide, please. Prior to jumping into the questions and trying to answer some of the questions that came up from additional from June 15th, are there any questions regarding the first section regarding eight can't wait?
Looking in the chat box right now, I don't see any. But Chief, I was planning on taking a five-minute break at 8:00, since most of the council members have been in their chairs since 6:00, because we had an earlier meeting. So let's go ahead, and around 8:00, we'll take a break.
Sounds good. The next portion of the presentation is trying to address the council questions or some of the questions that were posed on June 15th. Next slide, please. One of the first questions that was asked was, what percentage of calls for service are not criminal in nature? Our department responds to several thousand calls for service each year, such as crimes in progress, crime reports, and traffic collisions. We also respond to many calls that are not clearly defined as to what is occurring. These types of calls are reported by our community members as welfare checks, civil disputes, noise complaints, disturbances, et cetera. Our officers have basic information about what to expect. Although the vast majority of calls are law enforcement or crime-related, approximately 15% to 20% of calls result in a community caretaking function. But we do not know what, if that is what the result will be when we are dispatched to a call. This is a challenge for us. We are tasked with addressing community issues besides criminal incidents. We receive calls from citizens asking our officers to check on issues, such as a person laying on a park bench, a vehicle that is not recognizing the neighborhood, or noise coming from a neighbor. When we respond, we keep an open mind to what we could encounter. For example, a call related to someone laying on a bench. Is it someone in need of social assistance? Are they injured? Are they just tired and decided to nap, or are they a victim of a crime? The default of our community is to call the police. We encourage our community to call us. I have stated multiple times, if you see something, say something. Or when in doubt, call us out. Even our social systems rely on us to respond either prior to their arrival or alongside. For example, child protective services typically request officers to respond to residents when following up on complaints or concerns reported against a parent. We receive calls from a local hospital to assist with patients that are in crisis. Recently, we were called by the fire department to help with what they reported as a combative elderly citizen. We respond and assist with these incidents because these are community caretaking calls for service. We want to help. I must say right here that we are, and it was posed in the community comments, we are interested in working with our community on looking at these responses further. We do believe there is a need for additional social services with our community, and we need to look at it from a round-the-clock opportunity. Next slide, please. This slide is showing the organization chart and current staffing level of our department. Our department is comprised of many divisions. Patrol services, which are our uniformed officers, investigations, or our detectives, our 911 center that serves Isidua, Snokeville, and North Bend, 72-bed jail that serves multiple jurisdictions in King County, and our records division that is responsible for managing case reports, weapons transfers, and public records requests, to name a few of those items that they are responsible for. I'll start with on the uniform side. We have 35 sworn officers. That includes patrol officers through the chief of police. Patrol services, what you see on the street, is comprised of four patrol squads that provide 24/7 coverage for call response and crime prevention. Squad is typically comprised of six people, one sergeant, one corporal, and four officers. As you can see, currently, we have reassigned the majority of our specialty positions to patrol, to patrol services to ensure proper coverage. Due to the city's response to budget concerns, we have our four frozen police officer positions. Additionally, we have three corrections officers positions frozen, two dispatch positions frozen, and one records position frozen. We currently have two entry levels, officers that are also waiting to attend the basic academy, but they are unable to attend due to the COVID impacts to the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Center. We are hoping to get them into the academy in August or at the latest September. Next slide, please. This may be a good time before going to the next mayor to take that break.
Thank you. So, City Clerk, we're going to take a five-minute recess just to allow council members to use the restroom, get another drink, whatever it is that they'd like. So we'll come back in at around 8:02, and I'll call it to order when I see that all the council members are back. Thank you. City Clerk, I'm just checking to see if we have everybody back to continue from the break. Most importantly, the city clerk.
Hi, Clerk Eggers is here. And yes, I'm seeing that you have returning council members. Tim Smith doing a shout-out. Are you ready to go back on camera? Two things we cannot do without, our city clerk and our cameraman.
Tina, can I get confirmation that Tim is recording? Yes, one moment. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tim. Chief, at the time, I do not see questions in the chat box. So at this point in time, I think you can still proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The next slide addresses the question, what are the metrics on the use of force? We wanted to be able to provide just the raw data and information related to our use of force incidents for the last seven years. The graph on this slide represents the total number of force incidents by our police officers and our correctional staff. This is the total number of incidents we use force out on out of all the calls for service, traffic stops, inmate interactions, foot patrols, field contracts, and social contacts each year. We have also provided a spreadsheet to the community and to council related to the last seven years of use of force incidents from our department. The attached spreadsheet documents the force used during arrests for criminal activity, officers defending themselves, involuntary crisis commitment, preventing subject from harming self or others, or court orders remanding the individual into custody. We document the circumstances surrounding each incident to include the reason for contact, the subject's information, the type of force used, the number of officers involved, injuries, et cetera. Types of force used are often hands-on types of take, such as takedowns, compliance holds, and overpowering the subject. Other types of force used, maybe the tools or equipment that our officers carry. These are the taser, baton, pepper spray, and less lethal munitions. Let's go to the next slide, please.
Chief, we do have a question from Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Zach Hall. Thanks so far, Chief. I appreciate it. I was, on the previous slide of the use of force slide, I actually had a conversation with a community member right before the meeting who was trying to kind of unpack what this data means and what does it tell us? Does it point to a problem or doesn't it? And they were wondering if we might be able to provide the community with a per capita metric in terms of, you know, the use of force per capita and trying to understand, well, is it increasing, or is it steady, or is it going down? So I thought that might be something we could get out to the community at our next meeting, if possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, absolutely. We can look into that and have that data updated as well and overlay that with the current information. And let's see here. So on this next slide, the police department tools and applications. This is information, it's twofold. One, it continues to answer some of our use of force incidents, but also answers what types of equipment does our department have. The basic equipment that our officers carry on our belts consists of handcuffs, a radio, expandable baton. pepper spray, taser, and firearm. Uh, officers are also issued ballistic vests, ballistic helmets, and rifles for certain emergency situations. Um, equipment that officers are trained with and have available either in a patrol vehicle or for special instances are noise flash diversionary devices called NFDDs. Um, a pepper ball system, which is similar to a paintball gun that shoots pellets that contain the pepper spray or, um, the, oh, basically pepper spray in, in the system. We also provide CS, which is also known as a tear cast, tear gas, and kinetic impact projectiles such as the less lethal shotgun or a, another, um, 40 millimeter ammunition as well. The table shows the use of tools and equipment by the department in force incidents. As you can see, our officers suddenly use the tools and equipment they are trained to use. These tools give our officers options to resolve crisis situations. However, our policies and training directs us to utilize de-escalation or crisis communications to avoid using them. You will see, I'd like to point out in this graph, the asterix on, in 2018, there was one specific incident that resulted in several of the tools to be utilized. It revolved around in the fall of 2018, an adult individual assaulted his mother and was having a mental health crisis. When we responded, he barricaded himself inside his residence. We just de-escalated and we actually left, but we continued for nearly two weeks to provide services and encourage him to seek help. We had to fully respond once he began to break out his neighbor's windows with the bed frame that he had dismantled in his residence. Officers were ultimately able to protect the individual from significant injury, uh, by grabbing him as he attempted to leap off of his third-story balcony. In these situations, we do not want to use these, these tools, uh, but it is a better option sometimes than, um, having to utilize deadly force. The whole intent of a less lethal tool is to be able to hopefully, uh, de-escalate or to be able to prevent the individual from continuing their actions or continuing harming others or be a danger to others. Next, next slide, please. And again, tonight is really about providing additional information into our council and to our community of where we at, where we are at. It's, uh, hard to set a place of where we're going to go if we don't know where we're at to begin with. The Police Department wants to continue conversations with our community on our level of service and response to calls. We want to continue to hear their experiences and provide opportunities for officers to meet with community groups, neighborhoods, or workplaces. I've been fortunate to be able to have a few, uh, Zoom meetings with some small neighborhood groups and some of the larger gatherings as well to discuss some of the concerns that they are facing within our community. Um, I would encourage our community members to contact us and we would gladly have these conversations, um, in small groups or in larger groups and to discuss more about what the expectations of the Police Department are and continue to hear their stories. We are committed to continuous review of our policies and procedures. Our community meetings that, you know, we just talked about can help provide additional insight into the shaping of our policies. As going to be explained later by City Administrator Bob Kowitz, we are working on the development of additional reports to place on our website for community transparency. We do believe it's important to continue to share this information and to let our, let our community know what is occurring within city. And we will also work on the review of community process engagement and Police Department activities. Um, I know there's been a request for either civilian oversight, um, but we need to make sure that we engage all of our civilians, um, all of our community members. Um, we have, we've had a couple hundred of people so far who have sent emails or phone calls, but we'd like to hear more from, more of our community members on this topic and engage them and to have a community, uh, conversation and community response to how we move forward on this. Uh, that is, concludes my presentation tonight. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them now.
I will give, uh, council members a few seconds. I don't see anything currently in the question box. But Chief, even after, um, City Administrator's presentation, there may be questions for you.
Absolutely.
Oh, there we go. Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Chief Birbaum, for the presentation. I, um, when you were speaking about the eight can't wait, um, and the chokeholds, it, I wondered if you could, um, explain more of the process for actually changing the, um, the training and the manual that you mentioned? And, um, so what goes into that, those changes? And then what would be the process for making changes if it, um, if there needs to be more specification around the other eight can't wait policies to be in line with the intensive eight can't wait campaign?
Absolutely. Ultimately, the policy manual that is supplied by Lexipol is a recommended policy manual. Each agency has the ability to modify policies that would best suit their agency and/or their community. For example, some communities maybe, um, are much larger than our community and would have larger, uh, programs. And so policy manuals may identify those. Now specifically regarding the eight can't wait, uh, we can, we can have a conversation and if our community deems that we, um, have a conversation about banning the chokeholds, um, it is simple as a conversation of us saying we are going to remove it from our policy. That is what occurred after I had made that initial, um, communication about that we had allowed it, but under narrow circumstances. And we've decided to move it completely from our policy manual. So we do have the ability. It is not dictated by Lexipol. Um, there are case law and, um, some best practices and recommended model policies, um, from across the nation that are included in the policy manual. But we can make a determination that we are going to modify policies to adjust our, some of our community needs and/or our, uh, what our state law or state practices.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief. Not seeing any other questions, I would like to give Council President an opportunity at this point in time to share or summarize any public comments that have been emailed on this topic if you have not already done so.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I did summarize, I think the only comment that was, the comment that was most directly applicable to this was, um, a criticism of the data that went into the eight can't wait campaign. But I think for all of the presentations, I did broadly summarize earlier. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to double check with you. Um, the next, uh, part of this, I believe, is being, uh, presented by City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, the first portion, uh, was Chief Birbaum giving an overview of some of the questions. We'd like to move now, uh, to Mayor Pauli's proposed, uh, action plan. I'll ask the city clerk to put that document up on the screen. Uh, as I think the mayor has already mentioned, uh, the opportunity tonight is really to review, uh, this draft document with the city council, get some feedback. It's the mayor's intention, uh, to hold no fewer than two community meetings over the, the course of the next month to get additional feedback, uh, in, in line with the Obama, uh, pledge. She would like to have one, uh, meeting, uh, specifically talking about the use of force policy and then a second meeting talking more broadly about the, uh, action plan, uh, that you see here up on the screen.
City Administrator, excuse me, before you go on, we have a question from Councilmember De Michelle.
Certainly.
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. Just a process question. This is a, uh, there's a lot of information to unpack in this plan. And I'm wondering if it is beneficial for us to provide input by section, by line? Or would you rather that we provide input at the end of the presentation?
Madam Mayor, uh, unless you object, I think by section is fine. I, I agree. There's a lot of information here. We have, uh, additional city staff also on the line, uh, to help amplify and also to answer your questions. So, uh, Mayor, it's fine with you.
That sounds great. By section sounds great. Thank you for this suggestion, Councilmember De Michelle.
So the plan is divided into three areas, uh, short-term, uh, projects that would be commit to being concluded by the end of August. Medium-term projects, which we would commit to being concluded by the end of the current calendar year of 2020. And then, uh, more longer-term projects that would take us into 2021. Um, there's a lot of different issues here. I think the mayor wanted to look at a lot of the issues that were raised by members of the community thus far. Uh, as we mentioned, uh, the Obama pledge, uh, specifically focused on the use of force. Uh, we also have reviewed, uh, the Obama Administration 21st Century Policing Report as well as a report on community policing by the United States Conference of Mayors. Uh, so from all those various sources, um, come the recommendations that you see here. So, uh, let me get into the short-term recommendations, really of, of the many things that we have talked about. I think the, the Squad Police Department use of force policy is certainly key among them. Uh, Chief Birbaum went through, uh, the policy comparing it, uh, to the eight can't wait model policy. Uh, there have been some comments this evening about eight can't wait, um, as an organization and their evolving purpose. Um, this, uh, action plan really does not subscribe, uh, to any of the larger issues that, uh, may more recently have been, been shared by eight can't wait. But they do have a model, a use of force policy. And I think many communities are looking at that specific piece of the eight can't wait movement. Uh, that model policy is a good, a good benchmark to apply to their policies. And so when we look at, uh, our use of force policy and the eight can't wait model policy, that's really the extent, uh, that we're looking at as far as the eight can't wait initiative is that model policy. Uh, so it would be our hope to get additional questions from the council this evening. We'll go back out to the community, get some additional feedback. Uh, as Chief Birbaum said, uh, a number of those eight can't wait initiatives are included in our policy, uh, perhaps not word for word, uh, perhaps in other parts of our, uh, policy manual in addition to the use of force policy. So we'd like the community to kind of weigh that, the councils weigh that. And then when we would come back to the city council in August, and we're proposing that the, the next, uh, time to review this would be a special meeting on August the 10th, uh, to review that use of force policy. Uh, the second short-term area is Police Department reporting. And there are sections, uh, regarding Police Department reporting in, uh, both the short, medium, and long-term, uh, sections of this action plan. Uh, I think there's a, a great opportunity for us to continue to be transparent, uh, with our policies, with our, uh, data that we have. Uh, I think we, uh, will be well-served by having a, a regular monthly report that we would commit to work on between now and the end of August, uh, that would be available to the city council and the community. It really would serve as a snapshot of the, uh, data of, of the interactions with the Police Department. Again, looking at calls for services, types of calls responded, use of force and other indicators. Uh, and then this monthly report would be augmented over time and we'll get to those other pieces as we move forward. Uh, the third area under the short-term, uh, portions of the action plan would be city council equity training. This was something that was raised, uh, at the meeting on the 15th. Uh, the council, uh, provided some initial positive feedback to doing that kind of training. So we would like to move forward with scheduling that training. If we cannot have it prior to August 31st, certainly to have that scheduled. Our Human Resources Department is already identifying trainers, uh, that would provide this initial, uh, class. Uh, again, this is not meant to be a one-and-done type of training, but really a, a starter process for the council. Then after that initial training, uh, to come back and determine additional next opportunities. So, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, those are three, uh, points, uh, under this action plan, uh, our short-term, uh, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember De Michelle, who has comments.
Uh, thank you. Again, Councilmember De Michelle here. And, um, I did want to talk about the equity training because I have been through equity training in the past and, uh, always found it to somewhat, uh, dissatisfying. And, uh, so I, I just hope that this, I think you addressed it a little bit. I hope that this is, uh, more than a checklist, that we don't just check this off and say we've done it. But that we, uh, I'd like to see us kind of lay the foundation that opens the door to an ongoing, uh, ongoing learning and conversation and understanding well into the future with our community. And specifically, um, you know, one of the things I love about Issaquah is that it is now and it is becoming more each year, a multiracial, multicultural community. Um, and within each of those communities of color, we have many, many subcultures and traditions, foods, and social cues, languages, and so forth. So any training that we do short-term, I think without a doubt is going to be incomplete. So I just wanted to say that I really want us to, um, instead of trying to stuff a lot into this initial training that we, um, we really think about a, developing a platform that we can then, um, begin to use as we do outreach and bring people in the community into the conversation. Um, so that's my hope for the training, that it is, uh, deep, uh, but maybe not so broad. And that we talk about fundamental principles at the beginning. So that's my comment on that particular item.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Zach Hall. Um, now, building off that, I had a question about the equity training as well. And just to say that, um, in my conversation with that community member I mentioned earlier, uh, they also, uh, had asked if we can, um, if that training is going to be virtual? If it can be streamed live like our meetings are? So that way, community members can listen to what we're hearing and maybe poke us and say, hey, here's my lived experience. Maybe fill in, fill in some of the blanks that Councilmember De Michelle is, is mentioning. So I was wondering if that might be possible or, yeah?
Councilmember Hall, members of the council, uh, you know, certainly we could identify that. As I think Councilmember De Michelle mentioned, this is meant to be, uh, the first step of a larger, uh, probably curriculum, if you will, of training. Uh, in my past experience working with another city council, uh, they found it important to kind of get all on the same page first. That different council members come from different perspectives on these issues. And by having some sort of initial training, uh, to help that, uh, certainly was beneficial in another community that I work for. So we'll continue to look in, as I've been working with Deputy Johnson, our HR Director, uh, to try to find that. I, I, I don't anticipate it that it would be bringing people, lots of different people into share experiences on this initial training. But certainly as we move forward, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz speaking. Uh, so I have a question about where we get further citizen engagement. So I think it was great hearing from the community this evening. Um, I really appreciate, it can be very difficult to have these conversations and it's in some ways sticking your neck out, uh, to have a conversation like that, uh, with the council. And I heard stuff tonight, even, even the stuff that I found surprising, I was glad, I was glad to hear from the community. Um, but I, I feel like, um, you know, the chief mentioned wanting to hear from the whole community on public safety. And I'm wondering if there are mechanisms, uh, where the mechanisms are to hear from the public beyond the council setting, which I think is particularly important during this COVID era where it's harder to, to, to get rapport with your elected officials and with city officials who are present. So I'm wondering if we have any mechanisms that way and if we don't, if we can add some. Thank you.
City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Uh, Councilmember Mertz, members of the council, uh, the mayor's contemplating at this point over the next 30 days two, uh, community engagement opportunities. Uh, we are, we have asked the, S, the Issaquah Equity and Inclusion Community Forum if they would host a, uh, a meeting, uh, specifically focused on the use of force policy. Uh, this is in line with the Obama Foundation Mayor's pledge, uh, to talk very specifically about the details of the use of force policy. And then there would be a second meeting, um, virtual meeting such as this, held, uh, for community members who are interested to have just a wide-ranging, uh, discussion on that. I think that the, many members of the council are familiar with the meetings that we've been having, uh, uh, talking about in New Rivers and Streams, uh, Commission. Uh, the first one of those was very successful. We have another one tomorrow. So along those same lines, providing a lot of opportunity for people to discuss things. Uh, once the plan comes back to the council in August, there are several components to that plan. I think that will require additional community meetings, certainly any changes, uh, that we consider with the Police Department, either through structure or budget. Those will be another series of community meetings, uh, that we would have, uh, during the balance of the summer going into the budget, uh, or the end of September. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mertz?
Councilmember Mertz, give a follow-up.
Yeah, um, I, that's great. Uh, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that those, there are those specific engagements already envisioned. Um, the only thing that I would add as a follow-up comment is, um, I, I hope to see very structured feedback from the community about these particular I, I hope to see very structured feedback from the community about these particular proposals. I think it was great to have sort of open ended conversations thus far, but I really do want to know whether the public thinks these suggestions are not going far enough or just right, or going too far, or entirely in the wrong time zone. And that sort of feedback would be extremely helpful to hear from the community. And I'm confident the administration will act that way. But I just, I just want to make it very, very clear. You know, there's a danger in, on these sorts of difficult topics. It's easier to talk about the broad epic vision of how we want the world to be. But I need to know whether these particular proposals will make the community feel more or less safe or be orthogonal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. I have a question and then a comment. And the, the question really builds on Councilmember Mertz's comment and question, which is, how do we envision attracting a diverse and cross section of the city to, into these public meetings? Because for this to be effective, in my opinion, we have to have different points of view. And the one thing I loved about public comments tonight is I heard a lot of different points of views. So I'll save my comment till after the question.
Madam Mayor, if I could reply. Again, I, I think we're looking at this in bite sized chunks, looking at responses to the, the plan itself first, and then the work of the plan as we move forward. My hope is, is that as the COVID-19 crisis begins to pass, we'll have some additional opportunities to reach out to folks. And we're looking at tools right now for the budget process online, which also may be helpful for this as well. So I think we're going to do the best that we can. But at this point, we're contemplating two community meetings between now and August 10th to get feedback just on the plan.
And Deputy Council President Ray, if I may add to that too. The event that ISACUAW Equity held was originally intended to be an open event, but they found out they had a limit of 50 attendees on it. And they met that limit. They were able to, and it was one of the largest groups that I've ever got to sit and listen to. They had five panelists, but they had a cross section from the community of 45 more members. So working with them will be super helpful. They are very connected to a lot of different organizations in town because we are trying to get that really diverse voice. And you also had a comment for this evening.
Well, and my comment really tacks on to that is that just in listening to comments tonight, we, we have, we have a very respectful populace with very divergent points of view. And, and you know, just some things that I wrote down that really stuck with me. And one was carefully seek to understand from Carrie McGill. And, you know, do your homework before pointing figures from Stan Conrad. And, and you know, defunding is a really scary term from Tara Lee Spencer. There's a lot of people out there with a lot of points of view. And when we had trouble with traffic, we created the Traffic Advisory Board. And when we weren't getting the traction we wanted with environmental issues, we reformed Rivers and Streams. And when we were coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, we created the reopening task force. And I just think that this is not a problem to be solved in the next month or two. This is a problem that's, that's going to take months and months and months to solve. And I would like us to commit as an organization to taking this on and saying, we're going to create a body to help us answer these difficult questions because they're complex and they're difficult. And, and so it's not a, okay, we're going to do it and we'll get some great input and we'll update our plan and we'll be done. I think this is a, this is a starting point for a long and term and enduring conversation.
Thank you. Next up is Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I was thinking more about Councilmember Mertz's comments. I had a similar, similar thought. I think that some people have very valuable perspectives on the issues that we're talking about, but may not feel comfortable either publicly speaking to us, which is, you know, I, I think they might want us to know their perspective, but they might not want to speak publicly at a council meeting for a variety of different reasons, which are all perfectly valid. And they might not also want to email us or they, they might prefer a different venue. Normally we could talk with people one on one. We can't do that very effectively right now because of the COVID-19 issues. And so my thought is, I think we need a variety of tools. A task force is one tool potentially, but I think we need a variety of tools. And one way that we've gotten comments from a lot of people and a lot of different voices in the past is through online surveys where we have, maybe we ask something about what neighborhood the person is from, but we don't identify to the individual person. And we also collect information and we could have an open comment box for additional comments. But I think that would be one potential way we could get information from a variety of perspectives. And I just want to make sure that we don't only hear from people that are comfortable with a fairly narrow set of engagement tools that we have available.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Well, it sounds like we have a theme going here. This is Councilmember Walsh. Because my thoughts were very similar to Council President Hunt and building on the other ideas. As a parent in the ISACUAW School District system, they have just done an amazing job recently of engaging commentary from people using a system called Thought Exchange. And so in addition to online surveys, I would be interested in something like that because this is a complex issue. This is something we want to hear. We want to reach out and make people comfortable with providing their opinion, sharing it into their particular communities who might not be as comfortable in this setting. So the more that we can do on that, I think the better.
Thank you. I am not seeing any more questions at this time. Senior Minister Bob Quitz, if you want to start with the next section.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've covered the items that we would commit to for the next 60 days. Let's talk now about the balance of the items for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's coming up. The first item is a look at the police department budget and operation. We are looking at a fiscal year 2021 budget that will be presented to the city council in late September. It's the administration's recommendations that we move forward over the next few months and evaluate of how we might look at that budget and changes that might be best to make there. At this juncture, I think it's important to look at all the functions of the department, but it's best to focus as best we can on providing dedicated professional and mental behavioral health professionals into the day to day department operations. Currently, there are a limited amount of professionals available through a on call situation. In my discussions with the chief and with other police officers, that is generally not sufficient. And so I think it would make sense for us to look at what other ways we could put additional behavioral and mental health professionals with the police department. Other things to look at would be current community policing strategies, introduction of body cameras, the review of equipment purchases, and our continual, ongoing review of jail operation. We are dealing with a 90 day clock here with the budget coming out at the end of September. I don't believe that we will be able to make a lot of recommendations in 90 days' time, especially if we are going to be looking to solicit broader feedback from the community. But I do think it's important to look at some initiatives on the table. So with the, the plans, a review by the community in the next month, and we'll be coming back to the council in August, certainly would be our plan to use as much of that time as possible to identify ways to make a difference with the fiscal year 2021 proposal, but proposed budget. The next area is the police department use of force review and reporting. Chief Birbaum did a nice job this evening of sharing that reporting. But I think it's important for us to look at how we can regularly share that information with the public, how it can be better evaluated. And so we're committed between now and December 31 to look at that review and reporting. The third is that a police department's complaint process, both informal and formal. Right now, the department has existing processes for informal and formal complaints. In my review of those processes and my familiarity with other departments, I think that there are opportunities for us to change and improve how we look at both informal and formal complaints. So we would like to look at new systems to better track the complaints and standardize the investigative process. Next page, please. Number four is the review of police department training programs. Again, some of this would be done with an eye toward the fiscal 21 budget, but also I think it's really not just a funding issue, but a programmatic issue. What can we do to make sure that the, the training that we have is not only consistent with Washington state law, but what we think makes sense for our community? Again, I think this will take a fair amount of discussion. And we'll do what we can to incorporate changes for the 21 budget. But this is certainly something that we'll continue into year 21. Next, police department data collection and reporting. As I mentioned, the short term steps, I think there's an opportunity for us to continue to expand the data that we collect and share with the public. So we would work to expand and enhance that through the fall, through the end of the year and have new tools available to do that. Number six is the use of school resource officers. As I think many of you are aware, the city has school resource officers with the ISACUAW School District. And I think it would be important to evaluate the use of those police officers in our schools. Seven is city council, police department information sharing. This again came up on the June 15th meeting, an opportunity for the city council and police department staff to interact and share experiences and ask questions. So we're already begun, started scheduling some of those interactions and would look, come up with a plan that would allow city council members to do that through the course of the balance of the year. And hopefully put in place our regular interactions between the city council and police department staff. So that covers the, the police department pieces of this. The next few deal with equity, training and human services issues within the city. Number eight would be to develop and begin implementation of city.
Excuse me, Senior Administrator Bob Quitz, sorry for the interruption. Before we move to the next session, can you take a question from Council President Hunt?
Of course.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. It's a, it is a comment. And I just wanted to let council know, council probably recalls that Council Deputy President Ray and I have met previously with the leadership of the ISACUAW School District. And we will be meeting with them again later this week for the second meeting. And if you have, particularly because the issue around school resource officers also affects the ISACUAW School District. If you do have comments or thoughts on that, that you would like us to know going into our meeting with the school district, please do let us know. Thank you.
Continue, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Wally.
Number eight deals with citywide, city employee training. We have had opportunities to provide equity training in the past. I think that my understanding of the experience prior to my arrival with ISACUAW is that those were mixed results with that training. The city staff has an equity team of employees that has been in place and has recently expanded its membership to look at a variety of issues dealing with city employee equity training and equity issues with among our employees. And so we're proposing that we would continue to move forward with a multi-course training curriculum for all city employees on issues of racial equity. The curriculum would include both in-person and online training and that we would divide staff into different departmental cohorts or different groups to complete that training. We would hope that a curriculum would be developed here by the early fall that we would begin the training and that the initial curriculum would take us through the end of 2021 with both in-person and online training. And then at the conclusion of that cycle, we would look at that and come up with new training opportunities for our staff. We also are recommending that we would have a separate training program, specifically for managers and supervisors in citywide equity training. Number nine.
There is a question from Councilmember De Michelle.
Not a question. I have a comment on school resource officers. And I can hold it if you want, or I can give it now. So.
Go ahead. Sure.
Yeah, I, I have a high interest in the school resource officer issue. And full disclosure, I was a member of the ISACUAW School Board when we voted to introduce school resource officers. I think it was around 1997 that we did that. It was a unanimous vote. And that came out of a huge concern that we had in the community at that time about drug trafficking, particularly in downtown ISACUAW, particularly around the four schools that are in downtown ISACUAW. And we felt that it was important to have a police presence monitoring the situation in downtown ISACUAW. I would say that over the years, putting together Influence the Choice, our drug prevention organization here in ISACUAW, putting together the Healthy Youth Initiative, working with the garage, our school resource officers have just been superb and have done really excellent work. Particularly former officer Karen Wee was really involved with putting together Influence the Choice. So it's been a, a good program. I will say that in recent years, talking to young people, that they have told me and others that they are very intimidated by having a police officer with a gun. And I started to think about that, you know, why, why is that an issue? And I realized that in 1999, a couple of years after we passed the school resource officer, that we adopted that was Columbine. And school shootings, and of course, we've had hundreds of those school shootings since then. So it, I understand why young people today would be much more sensitive to the idea of having someone in their school with a gun. And so I think I personally would welcome this dialogue between the city and the school district. I would like to hear how they are feeling now about having school resource officers. And I think we need to always be looking for, does this service fit the current needs of our community? It's not, I am not criticizing our school resource officers at all again. I've had nothing but excellent interactions with them. And so, but I, I am also hearing from young people that it's a little bit intimidating to them. So I would welcome that dialogue. I've had a long, long interest in having school resource officers and I would like to very much be involved in that discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle, thank you for those comments. And just a note for our council leadership team is that it is a cost shared resource between the city and the school district. And because we are at this moment in time where we're doing reviews, I think it's super helpful to define what the outcomes are for, what are we trying to achieve at the schools and what are we trying to achieve in our city? And look at whether or not the resource that we're putting towards it is getting the outcomes that we need. So it's definitely an opportunity to talk. So thank you, Councilmember De Michelle, for sharing those thoughts. Senior Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes. Two additional items in the medium term category. The next is to broaden the scope of the city's Human Services Commission. Much of what we're talking about really are human services. And as we look at citizen involvement, community involvement in reviewing a lot of these initiatives, you know, it's the recommendation of the administration to look to the Human Services Commission as being that group. Its current scope of responsibilities perhaps are not as broad to deal with many of these issues. So this portion of the action plan would be to review the current scope of the responsibilities of the Human Services Commission, working with the members of the commission, and perhaps have changes that will come back to the city council for clarification to broaden its annual work plan, as well as also to help us understand better the community's thoughts on what kind of city services and city staff resources we should be putting forward toward human services. Right now, we have a very limited scope of city staff resources devoted to human services. Certainly through the COVID-19 crisis, we've learned that there's a lot that's looked to the city to provide assistance. So in addition to the issues with racial equity, we're, it's just the COVID-19 crisis proven that we need to look at that. So broadening the scope of the commission, also to review its membership. So broadening the scope of the commission, also to review its membership and bylaws to make sure that the membership on the Human Services Commission reflects the community that we're serving, and to bring that information back to the city council. Then finally, dovetailing on that, getting some input and guidance on our current human services staffing, contracting for resources. As I mentioned, the police department already has contracts with social service agencies to help. The city spends dollars, which is allocated through our Human Services Commission, on nonprofit resources to help the larger community. But I think there's a question as to how much city staff resources we should have, how much money that should be spent by the city on resources that are funneled through the city government. So I think it's important to look at that, not only for the police department, but our Parks and Recreation Department, look at the services that Eastside Fire and Rescue also provide through their department, and come up with a better plan on how we fund human services through the city of Isaguas moving forward. So a lot of issues, 10 issues that we would commit to look at between now and the end of the fiscal year. Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to stop and take any additional questions.
At this point in time, I'm not seeing any questions, but I'll give you a second or two, and other ways we'll move on to the long term. It looks like right now, Wally, you could move on to the long term. Thank you.
So there are obviously some issues that we know right now, sitting here at the end of June, that we'd not be able to accomplish by the end of the fiscal year. So we've tried to identify seven items for more long-term consideration. The first is the review of the police department's recruiting and hiring process. The city has a civil service commission that plays a role in hiring of police officers. Administration believes it would make sense for us to review not only our recruiting practices, but also to examine the role of the civil service commission in making sure we have diverse candidate police officers. Next page, please. Along those same lines, the department's policies for discipline and termination. These are policies that are regularly reviewed, but we feel that it would make sense over the next year or so to continue to review those policies and make recommendations for potential changes. Oftentimes, discipline termination policies are subject to collective bargaining, so we'd also would have to identify those individual policy changes that would require negotiations with our employee party. Next is the consideration of a police review, community board, or commission. These types of boards have a variety of responsibilities in communities across America. Some of them focus specifically on police complaints. Some of them focus on complaints and policies and procedures. Some of them have more authority than others. Some of them are purely advisory. I think it makes sense for Isaguas to review the types of commissions that exist out in other communities and decide what might make sense for us here in Isaguas. Number four is the creation of a police department dashboard. Again, looking to evolve the kind of information that we make available on a regular basis to the public from the police department. And I think ultimately, a dashboard would be something we would like to do, and we would have the ability to pursue that further during fiscal 21. Number five is to review schedule of all police department local fines and fees, as well as asset seizure policies. As I mentioned, the mayor reviewed not only the 21st Century Policing Report that was done during the Obama administration, but also a report by the United States Conference of Mayors. And this was one of those recommendations, I believe, that the mayor's report was to look at local fines and fees, to see what impacts those have, disparate impacts those might have on the community, as well as to look at asset seizure policies. Isaguas Police Department does not receive a lot of dollars regarding asset seizure, but many communities have looked at their policies to make sure that they meet community standards. And I think that would make sense for us to do as well. Next is to develop a racial equity toolkit, shifting gears a little again away from the police department, more toward our more larger review of city policies and procedures regarding racial equity. Many communities around America, and some here in our region, most notably the city of Seattle, Oklahoma, have been real leaders in looking at a racial equity toolkit that allows all decisions at all parts of government to be made through a racial equity lens. I think that would make sense for us to begin a process to look at. The city staff equity team would be charged with doing that work, and certainly there would be plenty of opportunities to touch base with the council and the larger community about that. In my previous position, we used a racial equity toolkit for three consecutive years during the budget process. I will be honest with you that it was not always an easy process, and it caused some consternation in the community, but it really did cause everyone to stop and look and see what kind of impacts a budget reduction certainly had from a racial equity lens. Not exclusive to budget, of course, but certainly can be a very useful toolkit, and these are looking to work creating one that fits their community. And then finally, is a review of citywide policies and procedures using the racial equity toolkit in addition to projects, in addition to budgets. You can look at policies and procedures to make sure that those procedures are implemented in a way that is equitable to all. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is Mayor Polly's action plan. Again, the ask of the council this evening is feedback on the plan itself. We would propose to spend the month of July reaching out to the community to get feedback on the plan, come back to the council at a special meeting on Monday, August 10 with that feedback, then ask for the council's endorsement of the plan, and then begin a process of working on these various issues over the next 12, 18 months. So Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Dang it. Okay. So thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. We have people lining up. We'll start with Councilmember Mark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mark speaking. So out of all of these, the one that I think is the toughest and possibly the most emotionally charged is around the hiring and termination and correction, discipline, or whatever the right word is, for officers. I think that there is a perception, rightly or wrongly, in the community that sometimes the, there's an adversarial relationship between collective bargaining and efforts to get rid of bad cops. And I don't know if that's fair, but I think it's out there. I don't think it's the case, I don't know of any specifics in Isaguas, but I think nationally, we've seen time and time again where it seems like bad cops get reflectively defended. And it reminds me, unfortunately, of how elements in the Catholic Church sometimes shielded bad priests. In the same way, priests have an authority and a power that is unique in our society, so too do police officers because of the importance of their work. And so we have to ask the organizations to which they belong to help us root out the problems. And I know that's difficult, and I know collective bargaining in public organizations is very difficult. I come from the private sector, where I can fire somebody on the spot for something racist or inappropriate behavior, and as long as it's clear, you know, it's just fine. And I get that it's different in the public organizations. But I guess what I'm saying is that if the world has changed in the last two months, which I believe it has, I have to ask that collective bargaining units understand that and work with the city when the time comes, such that residents in Isaguas know that the collective bargaining stands with the residents. And yes, they are an organization to support their members, but they have to change with the times, and they have to understand that there is this perception out there, and it doesn't help officers. It doesn't help all the good cops that are out there when it's seen that bad cops are defended inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I wanted to reflect on the short, medium, and long-term kind of framework that we're looking at here and the things that are in each of those buckets. Generally, I support these ideas. I'm a little bit concerned with using the "it can't wait" as a framework for reviewing our policies in the short term, because I'm just not, there's so much happening in the world right now. There's so much research. Every day, I read a new article. I participate in a new meeting discussing people's experiences, and I come away with all these new ideas. And I just get concerned that maybe we jumped on to the first thing that came out that was the hot new trend, and I don't want to feel limited in that way. Also, I very much appreciate Chief Bearbaum's explanation of those individual circumstances of the policies. I think it sounds very well thought out, and I appreciate the nuance to that. So I think I'm just a little bit cautious of using that as a framework for that conversation. Going beyond short-term into midterm, I look at that and I go, wow, that's a big list. That's a big list when we're already approaching a supremely difficult budget period. And I get concerned that we are biting off potentially more than we can chew. So I would ask that we take a look at that and really make sure that what we're doing, we're going to do well and that we're committing to. And if some of those things, particularly ones that need community feedback, need to be pushed off so that they are done well, I would rather do that than try to force something in a particular time period. And then on the long period, the thing that I see missing there is strategy and a long-term vision. And it comes down to this idea of reimagining. So what I'm not seeing there is a sense of, are we going to have the conversations about whether or not a police force has been asked to take on too many things, and whether or not we want to reimagine different city services to take on some portions of those? And so that would be what I would ask to add to that long-term portion of the framework, is where are we going? What do we want out of this? What is our long-term goal? How are we going to measure that? Almost like a city strategic plan idea, what is our approach to public safety? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember De Michelle is up next.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. I just have some general comments to make, listening to the public input tonight. I think that we were communicating and miscommunicating around the term "defund the police." And so I just wanted to address that directly. I've been talking to people and interacting with people who tell me what "defund the police" means is that we need to take some of the money that currently goes to policing and put that into mental health counselors, for example, to support personnel for the police. And I think that the death of George Floyd has simply accelerated a process that was already happening. In the police departments around us, they are adding and have been adding mental health counselors. Our EFR has got now a mobile mental health ban that they're using. And the addition even in our Isaguas Police Department of a community resource officer was a way of having a person there who engaged with people on the street, people who were in need of assistance immediately. So this has just accelerated something that was in the works already. I view it not as quote-unquote "defunding the police," but supporting the police and facing outward, making sure that when people call the police, that they get an appropriate response with someone who is trained to address particular issues that may take professional expertise. And I think that Chief Bearbaum really pointed out very clearly that when the call comes in, we don't always know exactly what the entire call entails. But just having people on staff who could respond in a different way to particularly mental health issues, I think would be a support for our police and not in any way saying that they have not been doing their job, or that there's something incorrect about how they're doing their job. This is just another way for us to work together to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate and effective. I also want to add that I am very clear that the issue of adding mental health professionals, homelessness outreach people, social workers, et cetera, is not directly addressing the issues of racism. And we have to, I think, go at those directly. So in some ways, to me, those are two different issues. So those are just some thoughts about, I think the phrase "defund the police" has energized a lot of people, and I think that it's maybe done some harm in terms of the community understanding exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next up is Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I will follow up a little bit on Councilmember De Michelle's comment about "defund." I think it is unfortunate that the community has gotten the message that somehow the Isaguas City Council is considering defunding the Isaguas Police Department in the very basic definition of that word, which means abolish. That is not, I haven't got any hint from anybody in the mayor's office, staff, my fellow council members who are interested in defunding. I'm certainly not interested in defunding. I don't, my own personal concern would be, you know, look what the CHOP area in Seattle has where they don't have police officers available to deal with violence and other concerns. That, to me, is just a nonstarter. And I think we all have variations of the notion here about, you know, reimagining, which is another word that didn't originate with us. It's all over the news as well. I think of this in terms of, I think reimagining probably is the closest term. But I want to speak also directly to that proposed action plan. It's very packed, and I want to thank everyone for the work that they've done so far. As we move forward, this needs to be very thoughtful and caring, certainly community-driven. I think one of the most important factors to me is what the data says, what the statistics show. I think the wrong approach is random percentage cuts, like what was proposed in Seattle, just whack 50% out of the Seattle Police Department's budget. I don't know what the Seattle Police Department needs to best serve its community, and I think that that's the question before us, not only in terms of money, but how do we staff a police department in a way that best serves Isaguas based on historical, real data and also trends? You know, what are, you know, we've talked about the trends, you know, as Councilmember De Michelle talked about, mental health issues with, you know, people and more folks on the street, asking, and asking our police department to take on more and more of the responsibility for calls that, not only those types of calls, but other types of calls that we are more and more looking for our police to handle. You know, the loud neighbor, the dog barking, the loud party. We, as a society, more and more look to the, to police and our, our legal community to handle issues for us. And maybe we should get back to being just better neighbors and talking one-on-one about our issues, and think we can, maybe we can resolve some of the things before we call police. So I think that after we have more detailed data and coupled with the information and feedback that we will be getting from the community, I think then we have more information that will help drive a discussion about what drive a discussion about what, what we might want to change in the police department in the way that we deliver public safety services. So again, I, you know, this is a lot of information and an action-packed, packed plan that's been put together in a very short period of time. There's a lot of work to do and I commend you all for putting all that together for us just in a few short weeks with everything else that's going on. Thank you.
What? There's something else going on, Councilmember Goodman? Not in 2020. Thank you for that. We're going to go to Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. I just want to rewind a little bit to the midterm plan and it's number nine, broaden the scope of the Cities Human Services Commission, which I think is a really interesting idea. My, my question is, how do we, if we do that, how do we coordinate it across programs? Because what we don't want to do is to have the Human Services Commission take on a bunch of new things and at the same time, we're not changing what we're asking the police to do. So I guess my question is, how do we, how do we bring that together? How do we break down those silos? How do we treat this as a continuous suite of services?
The Minister Bob Kowit?
Yes, Deputy Council President, thank you for the question and I'm going to phone our friend. Monica Negrella, our Human Services Coordinator is on the line and Monica and I have had a fair amount of conversations just in the last week or two about these issues. And so Monica, if you wouldn't mind getting on the line and sharing some of your thoughts with the council and also some of your experiences, because many of you may not know that Monica comes from a, a human services administration background, working with her own agency and has had some opportunities to work with agencies as well as integrating those services with police departments. Monica, welcome and if you could share some thoughts.
Sounds good. Hello, everyone. Good evening. So yes, so, so many things to share and so many thoughts going through my mind as I listen to everyone. Certainly tonight, yes, I am a staff as the Human Services Staff, but as City Administrator Bob Kowit mentioned, I do come from a nonprofit background where I did work. My profession is actually, I'm a licensed mental health counselor and substance use disorder counselor as well. So I worked as a direct professional and I also worked in administration as a director. And ironically, as you might have noticed my accent, I am also of a different culture. So I could speak if we have hours about all of these at once. And I do have thoughts and ideas that I would love to share at some point if we have more time. But yes, I think they can all be connected in, in trying to answer Councilmember Ray's. I do think that they all can be connected. I do believe that the work, it would take longer than just a couple of months. It is not just a one assignment, let's check the box and move forward. I do believe there are a lot of connections with Human Services and the court, with the community court. There are a lot of connections with, yes, what the police does and providing social services. And I do love some of the comments that you made that we should not, I, I'm afraid to think that we are going to highlight Human Services and undermine the work that the police does because that's not. And I think that's sending the wrong message and our police officers, when we worked, when I used to work as a crisis counselor and even as a director responding to calls, we always went hand in hand with our police officers and we cannot be there without them. And so there's, so, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm rambling a little bit, but yes, how would we connect them? I think, I don't know that I have a perfect answer tonight, but I do think that that means going back not just to the Human Services Commission, looking at what we said earlier at, at the bylaws and the membership of the community, just looking at the community at large, inviting community members of different ages, different socioeconomic backgrounds, different cultures, and having that diverse voice that you all called earlier. And then with the community, making the long-term plan to integrate all the work in the larger city work and not just integrating it with the police, but integrating it with the other commissions and boards, integrating it with all departments. So I think a lot could happen in a short period of time, but also kind of like strategically thinking how we are going to make the long-term planning.
Definitely a strong possibility that we are able to do this. Deputy Council President Ray, did you have an additional question or comment?
No, that's great. Thank you. I think we have a ton of work to do. I guess that's from Monica's ram.
They get rambling is.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you.
There we go.
This is Zach Hall. Appreciate it. Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button. That's the first time it's ever happened to me. I just wanted to follow up on one thing a couple of councilmembers have said trying to find this distinction of what people mean by defund the police. And I think it's important to recognize that some people do mean defund the police, especially some people in our community. So I think as we approach that from a city council as policy leaders, as people that try and find the bridge between community members, that we acknowledge how each community member is showing up and what they're thinking. You know, try to address what is the solution that we're all trying to solve and find common ground to that question of, you know, what, how do we strengthen our community through, through public safety and public supports? So I just wanted to say that real quick. And then the question that I had is actually kind of of personal interest to me. So if the community has no interest in this, then city administration can just throw it in the garbage can. But I was interested in for, oh shoot, is a medium term. Oh yeah, as we start thinking about, well, you know, focusing on incorporating mental and behavioral health and crisis intervention professionals in public safety and law enforcement. I'm interested, what does that mean for our 911 dispatchers if they have a different set of criteria for dispatching in Issaquah than they do in North Bend? And does that make it more tedious? I don't have the answer to that, so.
That is a great question. I'm not sure if we have an answer for you tonight, but we are keeping track of all the questions. Thank you. Because we do provide, in case those on the call aren't aware, we do provide dispatch assistance to other cities. We do provide court and jail services to other cities. So really good question. I'm going to go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman brought up the point of letting data lead the information and the decision-making. And I think that's fantastic. And on that point, I wanted to take a moment and just throw some absolute praise toward Chief Beerbaum on the data that was released for all of the use of force incidents back to 2014. And that was just an amazing set of transparency. And you know what? I, it shouldn't be. It, it shouldn't be that that is going the extra mile, but I think it's something that I haven't seen before, that I don't think a lot of police departments and chiefs would be willing to release or discuss. And so I, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so much for releasing that information, for sharing it with us and the public. And it gave me a lot to think about and it also made me very much appreciate the way that our particular Issaquah Police is already responding, you know, looking at that and seeing that over that period of six years, seven years, there were only nine times that a police officer drew their gun. There were only 17 times that a taser was used and deployed. Really gives you perspective about what our police force, our particular police officers have already done for de-escalation and and taking those actions. So thank you for that data. And then to follow up on the idea of the Human Services Commission and broadening the scope, I, I very much appreciate the idea of covering those topics in a community-led commission. But I am a bit concerned and fearful over the idea of having the Human Services Commission do that, not because I don't think they would be great people to do it, but they already do such an amazing valuable service for our community and they have a full docket doing it. And I want to make sure that we don't overtax a group that already does something super, super valuable by adding on to what they do. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I first wanted to acknowledge that we are at the beginning of the conversation. We have been receiving a lot of engagement around what it would mean to reimagine public safety. And I think I would urge us to not, both not jump to what the answer is, but also I think not jump to taking any options off the table. If nothing else, because I think that we are hearing from so many different people and different perspectives. And I want to make sure that people know that we are still, in my opinion, we are still in that very open listening phase on this topic and we do want to hear those perspectives and we're not yet taking things off the table. I, I also, separate topic, I also appreciated the information that was released by Chief Beerbaum. One of the things that was, one of the things that was mentioned to me when I was speaking with some of the peaceful protesters at City Hall was they wondered if that information was available. And so to have it be accessible and, and easily available is, is really, is really important, I think, and improves our transparency and I appreciate that a lot. I, I would like us in the future to have more information. This would be not just for council, but also for the community members that are looking at this, whether it be in the Human Services Forum or, you know, the, if we form a task force, et cetera, that we look at what other communities are doing. As I mentioned, there is one, one program that was mentioned to me was this Kahoots program, which is the crisis intervention program that works with police. I think it would be really helpful to know what other communities are doing and how it works and what's worked well. Because I think as we, as we look to reimaging, having those other options of what's out there would be useful. And I think also not just in the United States, but even in other countries, I think seeing what is, how public safety is addressed in a variety, variety of circumstances would be helpful. I have a procedural thought on the commissions, the, the way that the commissions are addressed. So we have the Human Services Commission, then we have potentially a, then we have a civil service commission discussion, and then we have potentially a option to consider a task force. I would just ask that in the discussions with the Human Services Forum, it be, you know, we have in mind whether or not we're going to develop another task force because like one of, one of the other councilmembers said, I think empowering the Human Services Commission is great, but I also want to make sure that we have groups that are doing meaningful work and addressing all of the topics that we want to address and having them, having them appear at different points in the schedule could lead to some sort of mismatch or gaps. And so I wanted to just make sure that that's in the planning, that it's taken into account that there's other commission steps later on. And then the last thing, in the long term, I think that in the long term, I think one thing that the plan could, we could use more of in the plan is more events or other opportunities to embrace the diversity that we have in our city. I mentioned that this is one of our strengths. I really believe that's true. And I think we could do a better job of celebrating that as a city and supporting that. Supporting that as our city value. So I would like to see more of that. And then also potentially more opportunities to just sort of get to know your neighbor. When you look at all of the number of noise complaints and things, I wonder if we could as a city, support more opportunities to get to know your neighbor and we might address things that way. That would be to the benefit of all.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Marks, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I really appreciate that the administration came up with very clear near, mid and long-term potential action. The stuff that's near term, two months is, is virtually instantaneous by municipal standards. And there's, there's some good stuff in here in all three categories. I understand the concerns around eight can't wait, but I think adds something to put in that near-term bucket. And because we don't have an obvious substitution for that, there isn't a clear, well, we should just go with option B. I'm confident that as you look at the mid and the long terms, that if, that's, well, some of the concerns around whether eight can't wait is sufficient or not sufficient, many of those issues are going to get readdressed in the mid and the long-term potential actions. In regards to the Human Services Commission, it's a longtime member of council. I think of all the former Human Services Commission chairs that used to be on the Issaquah City Council and now to be having this conversation, we're like four of them and none of them are on council anymore. But I don't, I don't actually have a strong opinion about how to use Human Services Commission, but I will say that I think there's been a conversation for a while about the role of Human Services Commission in funding review. And it may well be that a reimagining of the Human Services Commission as to what constitutes that body and maybe a shifting of that body could be very healthy for it. And I say that as someone who has a family member that served as a youth member of that body and who views her work as valuable, but you know, things change and maybe Human Services Commission should as well. You know, I said three months ago, when we were talking before, before the George Floyd event, that public safety was the cornerstone of municipal governance. And I still believe that, but I think that what we have found in the last several months is a challenge to understand what our community means by public safety. And so I am very positive about the course the administration has laid out in front of us today. I understand the passion that people use terms like defund and, and reimagine. I think that this is a practical body that believes in finding working solutions to problems. And I am confident that our community does as well. And so as we embark on this path, I'm confident that our community will not pick anything, anything that has a high chance of failure or that has a high chance of unintended consequences, that we will pick, we will pick a path both legislatively and administratively that will lead to greater public safety in our community, if we listen to our community. And I believe we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember DeMichele.
Never mind, I don't have another comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Sorry, I had to get on board there.
A little fast. That was a fast switch.
So just as an overall comment to, I think what our, I think one thing I have heard from the community is that we need to go deep into our policy structure and look at all of our issues. And so I did want to speak to the racial equity toolkit and developing that and looking at our policies. And I want to marry that with the work that we are hoping to do on Title 18, looking at how our land use policies are contributing to, to whatever racial discrimination might be occurring in our community. might be occurring in our community. The whole issue of affordable housing, the whole issue of why don't we have more diversity in our teaching corps? Why don't we have more diversity in our police corps? Why don't we have more diversity in other arenas? Often goes back to because people can't afford to live here. And so this may be stretching a bit, but I really think that Racial Equity Toolkit will help us look at all of our policies, go deep into what we're doing, and see how we can make this truly a welcoming, inclusive community where we have a, a true diversity in all levels of our economic structure in, in our community. So I do like that idea, and if City Administrator Bobcovich has seen that used effectively as a way to review our policy, I think that would be one of the really strong, long-term things we can do to address the issues in our community. So I support that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I'm not seeing any more comments, and if anybody, and I see Council President Hunt may want to make a motion, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to receive draft Isaguas Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan and direct the administration to return to council for final review and endorsement of the plan at a special council meeting on August 10th, 2020 at 6:30 PM.
And Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Hi, this is Chris Ray. I'll second the motion.
That's great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? I am not seeing any. So we will proceed to a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Hi, thank you. Clerk Edgar speaking. I'll do the roll call vote now. Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
I heard seven ayes. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. I just have a few closing comments to share. I have been serving in, on a border commissioner or councillor in the mayor's chair for 25 years. And rarely do we get speakers that come in with the amount of passion and emotion that we heard tonight. They covered the spectrum of anywhere you could be on public health and safety and investments in your community. I know many of the people who spoke tonight, and I heard, I could hear the passion just in the, the way they delivered the information. This can be a really difficult subject to talk about, but I'm optimistic, just sitting and listening to the council and listening to those that came to talk tonight, that we are closer than we think we are, that we have shared outcomes that are going to become basis of how we're going to work our way through this process. Everybody wants more transparency. They want to make sure that we're appropriately training people for the 21st century challenges that they face. They want to know that the right resource is being called and sent out for the right situation. Is this crisis intervention? Is this a crime in progress? I love the comment that Daniel made about us being a model. And I think if I understood him correctly, he meant that our policies and procedures could be model documents for others. I've added something different. I thought of, we are launching a process tonight where the process itself could model how to have these difficult conversations in your community when it's so emotional and passionate. So I'm looking forward to our touches out in the community, coming back to council, and the whole book of work that we have coming. But I'm really optimistic. I actually think what I heard tonight was a lot of common goals and visions, so I'm very excited. I wanted to thank the council for coming to, I'm guessing, their sixth meeting this month. I don't know if it's that many, but it sure has felt like it. And if there is no further business, we are adjourned tonight at, oh, hang on one second. There's one more piece of further business. Actually, City Administrator Bobcovich?
Yes, Madam Mayor, excuse me. I wanted to shift gears a little bit and talk about the COVID-19 crisis, and one of the things that we're doing as a city to move forward, to help the community with that. We have received a large amount of cloth face masks from King County. I believe they purchased them using their CARES Act funds. And so we are mobilizing to get those face masks in the hands of those Isaguas residents who may not have face masks. I think many people are aware Governor Inslee instituted a requirement for all residents of Washington State to wear a face mask when out in public. And so we are going to start making face masks available. If residents would like to get a face mask, starting on Wednesday, they'll be able to come to City Hall in the lobby of City Hall and pick up a face mask for their personal use. We would ask that people just take enough for themselves and their immediate family. We are also going to make face masks available this Friday at two community drive-through events, which we're still working on, but we'll have more details out in the community over the next few days. One will be at the community center here in Old Town Isguas. The other will be at Blakely Hall in Isguas Highlands from noon to 4:00 PM. Members of our CERT team will be there with proper social distancing and proper, proper PPEs to hand out masks to those who would need them. And if individuals are looking for masks, they can call our city general number at 425-837-3000. And if they're unable to come to any of these events or come to City Hall, we'll figure out a way to get the masks. Monica Negrilla, our Human Services Coordinator, has been working with a variety of other housing providers and other nonprofits, and we're going to be delivering quantities of masks to them. So we hope that over the course of the next several days, we'll be able to get masks in people's hands as well as have them available here at City Hall. We are still closed, but they'll be available in the lobby area during record business hours. Again, if people have questions, they can call our general number during business hours, 425-837-3000, and we can either answer those questions or make arrangements to get the face masks.
And Councilmember Walsh has a question, a comment, sorry.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. And thank you, City Administrator Bobcovich. That was news to me about the masks. I love it. Can you please send the information out? Because I've certainly heard of situations where masks are needed from some of the lower-income communities, and I'd love to share that out. On that note, similar to masks for community members, the Isguas Chamber of Commerce also has masks that they were provided to give out to businesses that need it, not just for chamber members, but any Isaguas business that needs masks or other PPE or I believe hand sanitizer. And there's a forum on their website to make that request. So I want to make sure the businesses know they have stock if it's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one last comment. I do want to add on to what I've heard from some of the councilmembers. Chief Beerbaum, thank you very much for the presentation, the clarity and the answers, the data. You know you have a data-driven council and a data-driven mayor. But I also would like you to express our gratitude for all of those that work under your command, which is your police officers, your jailers, and your dispatch. It was good to hear from them and to tie some of the stories and information back to some of the data that you had. So my appreciation for all the work that they're doing. Thank you very much. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned at 9:36. Thank you all.